Good evening. At this time, I would like to reconvene the regular board meeting. Will the clerk of the board please call the roll?
Hall?
Present.
Solis?
Present.
Ike?
Here.
Segura?
Here.
Tarantino?
Here.
Jani?
Here.
Olir?
Here.
Okay, at this time, will you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? And instead of the pledge, we will have the National Anthem sung by students from Benita Vista High School.
Cool.
Oh Satan, you see, what's the answer be white? What's your proud evening? And why is that screaming? Who's your friend, bright star? To the devil's light? For your purpose be watched? For so gallant's history? And the Lord is with us.
What did he say?
I forgot.
He said that. It's my alma mater, he said.
It's not. God, it aired. Sorry, something happened with my computer.
Okay, well, we got through half of it, so let's let's go ahead and proceed with the pledge. How's that? Okay? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank the Benita Vista High School Choir for their for their singing of the National Anthem. What we saw of it was great. You guys have beautiful voices. You did a nice job. Absolutely. Okay, the board met in closed session preceding this meeting to discuss the following issues. One, public employee discipline dismissal, release, reclassification, reassignment, resignation, transfer, Government Code Section 54957. Two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Paragraph two of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Three, conference with labor negotiator, Government Code Section 54957.6. The board took the following action. Moved by Mrs. Hall, seconded by Mr. Solis, to approve the request for a leave of absence for one certificated employee with the vote of Hall yes, Pike yes, Segura yes, Solis yes, Tarantino yes. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the June 8th, 2020 regular board meeting. O two, after recognitions. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone, Solis.
Paul Hall was second.
And seconded by Hall. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Olir?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Ike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
At this time, we would like to welcome Manny Rubio, who will present the first recognition to the board. And that is the recognition of District Employees of the Year and their employees for their years of service.
Good evening, trustees, President Tarantino, members of the board. Dr. Jani, thank you for the opportunity to share with you this afternoon. So behind the scenes, you know, unfortunately, because of everything going on this year, we could not have an employee recognition event. And so this year, one of the things that we did was we took it all online. And so you'll see Diane's going to pop up here on the district website. If you go to it, we've done a whole lot of additions there over the last few months. But the most recent additions are, as you see, the senior classes 2020, which is part of the event that we did and some of the things going on. But if you scroll down a little bit on that district website, on the main site, you'll be able to see, you'll see summer school, that's obviously going on right now, started today. But then you're going to also see our employees of the year. And so if you go ahead and click right in there and they'll meet the employees of the year, it's going to pop up what is Sweetwater Currents. And those of you who've been around the district for a while know that Sweetwater Currents is a publication that's been around for a long time. It's gone through a lot of different iterations. And the most recent is an online webpage style, blog style video that we have created, or a website that we've created. And so if you click within that, you're going to see a few different things. You're going to see Employees of the Year, right? You'll see the top, at the top there, the Employees of the Year, our Teachers of the Year, and it's also going to do Years of Service. So those of you that have attended the Employee Recognition Event that we hold annually, we start honoring all of our employees from 10 years of service on every five years. And so it's a little bit retroactive. So if you're in your 11th year of actual working, you're acknowledged for your 10th year. 16th year, you're acknowledged for 15th year, et cetera. So we go from 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, and even up to 45. And I think that's our, we've had a few in the past, but you'll see when you click on that page under Sweetwater Currents, all of the different listings of the employees in 1920 who have achieved those years of service. What you're also going to see again is the Employees of the Year. And as we've done every year, we've definitely tried to make sure that we honored our Employees of the Year through a couple of different things. And at the Employee Recognition Event, we typically allowed them to provide a speech. So this year, because we didn't have an event, we did a little bit of a special video, a little bit longer than normal. And if you go on there, you'll actually see all of the names of our Employees of the Year, sorry, in there, and those that participated. So without any further ado, I think we'll go ahead and we're going to show the video that we created this year. It features several of our teachers, as well as several of our other categories of employees who were being honored this year. So we hope you enjoy and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Andrea Royall. For me to be chosen as Eastlake Middle School's Teacher of the Year means that some of the teachers that I really look up to and that I respect, they also recognize and respect what I do, which is a huge honor, and I'm very grateful for that. To go further in the process as a District Teacher of the Year is a chance for me to reach more people, to inspire more people. I want to inspire people about the importance of arts education. It is absolutely essential in our lives. I also want to inspire about the importance of teaching respect and acceptance and tolerance and love among our students. Distance learning has definitely been a challenge for a lot of reasons, but my driving force has been trying to find ways for my students to use their art to help other people. I think a lot of times when we're struggling ourselves, the best thing we can do is focus our energy on helping someone else who's struggling. And in turn, that helps ourselves as well. So that's what I have been trying to do, both for my students and for myself.
It really is such an honor to be recognized as the Teacher of the Year for Granger Junior High School. I teach with a lot of really amazing teachers. And to have them kind of recognize what we're doing with music at Granger and the impact it's having on the students is really rewarding. As a music teacher, sometimes it's a little easy to feel like you get overlooked a little bit in today's educational landscape. So to have other educators really take notice of what we're doing and how important it is and how important music is to the whole education of our students, it's really great. Distance learning is tricky, though, especially in a band setting. Being together and creating music together is kind of the heart of what we do. And so when we have to do it apart from each other, it's just, it's not the same. While these solutions have been really helpful and have made it so that we can kind of continue doing what we, what we love to do, there is, it's no substitute for actually being together and creating something together. So we're all really looking forward to the day when we can all get in the band room and make some music together again.
Receiving Confidential Employee of the Year means to me that I'm honored to represent a very hardworking group of staff members. We support areas such as the Superintendent's Office, the Board of Trustees, Fiscal Services, HR, Facilities and Operations, as well as the Legal and Labor Division. Again, I appreciate being selected. I truly feel we are all worthy of this honor. And as I sit here working remotely, I sincerely thank you. Speaking of working remotely, during these extremely challenging times, we have not skipped a beat. We successfully transitioned to MS Teams, planning, meeting, and completing what is necessary and required to keep the district moving forward. We've been able to successfully navigate the daily operations working remotely and yet stay connected to staff. Please remember that we can do this together. Stay healthy and stay safe.
I'm deeply honored to receive the Gage Employee of the Year. I want to thank the members of the Sweetwater Supervisor's Chapter R1250, National Association of Government Employees, past and present, for their service and support during my 15 years as a chapter officer. I would also like to thank the employees of the Sweetwater District family for their teamwork and devotion despite the many difficulties we face. That teamwork and devotion and cooperation has made the transition to working remotely seamless as we all continue to support the education of our children. Stay safe and be well.
Hi, my name is Samantha Barber, and I'm the School Administrative Assistant for Montgomery Adult School. What means most to me about being classified Employee of the Year is that I'm able to effectively assist my community and colleagues with the position I have grown into. I am so thankful for those who have helped me get to this point because these individuals saw the potential in me and encouraged my success. I'm grateful for the solid communication and team cohesiveness throughout the district and my division that helps me working through these times manageable. I also want to thank the CSEA for this honor. I will continue to represent with integrity and dedication to serve as this year's Chapter 471 Employee of the Year.
Being named San Diego County's inaugural High School Counselor of the Year has been such an honor. As school counselors, we put our heart into what we do through day. And the expressions of gratitude we receive is the fuel that keeps us going. This recognition has sparked a fire in me, and I hope to continue to do great work with my students and my colleagues. During this time of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's important to find a balance between work-life, family life, and life for yourself, me-time. I've really appreciated the extra quality time that I've had with my family. But at the same time, it's nice to have extra me-time as well.
To be named Employee of the Year for the district, it also means that the adage that my mom told me, that I tell my students, "Just try your best because your best is good enough," rings true. So I'm really happy to be named Employee of the Year for our district. A huge thank you also has to go out to my team at my site, National City Middle School, so a shout out to them. Because during this time, we've just been keeping open lines of communication. And, you know, we divide and conquer the work for this distance learning beast. And because of that, I feel like we're all able to be sane and do what's best for our students.
It's really just incredible to be a small representation of the many amazing things that are going on in our district. And to be able to represent not only the district, but the school and the programs that I personally am a part of on a small scale just really means the world to be able to do that because there's some incredible things going on. So I really just appreciate the opportunity, not to just grow professionally, but being able to obtain great feedback from students, to be able to continue to move forward in a very ever-changing climate. And to say the least, if that's, if that's one of the things that not only we can walk away as educators, but also model for our students, what an exceptional opportunity to be able to do so. So I hope that you guys are staying safe and doing well and also continue to grow during this time.
It truly means the world to me to receive this incredible award of Counselor of the Year for the Sweetwater Union High School District. Thank you to my counseling team for the nomination and the Sweetwater Counseling and Guidance Association Board for the selection. There are such amazing counselors that I have the opportunity to work with throughout the district. And for that reason, this award means even more to me. I absolutely love my job and feel as though I have the greatest privilege to work with the students, families, and staff at Eastlake High School. I would like to thank my students throughout the years who have been my daily inspiration for everything I do. I would also like to thank Maria Esther Lizaraga for hiring me and giving me the opportunity to live out my dream and become a school counselor. Also, my Eastlake High Counseling Team for helping me grow as a counselor and also going along with my crazy ideas at times. I'm incredibly grateful for my current principal, Dr. Cook, and the staff at Eastlake High School for consistently collaborating together to create the best positive school environment for students to thrive in. Lastly, I am grateful for my husband and son for supporting me and being the ones in the background cheering me on and listening to me always.
I am so honored and privileged to be one of the Employee and Teachers of the Year for our district. This is a full circle moment for me because 10 years ago, I started off as an after-school tutor at National City Middle School. I still have one of the letters that my mentees secretly put in my tutoring binder. This letter is stapled to the wall in my classroom, and it reads, "Never give up on me, or I will too." As teachers, we have such an important role to uplift and empower our students. And we are also gifted with the ability to make a difference in the lives of young people. I take my roles in educator seriously, and I know that we have positive change that we can continuously enact in this world. So thank you so much for this privilege. I hope to make us proud. And I know that I will be able to showcase all of the talents, capabilities, and innovation present in Sweetwater Union High School District. During these unique times of distance learning, I've been trying to connect with my students through video conferencing classes and, you know, trying to decrease the amount of load and being lenient on things and reaching out and just providing love and support their way because it is difficult for all of us and especially our students. During this time, I've also been applying to grants, contacting companies, and doing opening of donor choose projects. This is a unique chance for all of us educators to have the time that we've never, ever had before to apply for resources for our classrooms. When our kids come back, our classes will be fully stocked. They're either not exiting or full-on traditional class again. We have everything we need to keep our kids successful.
This is Manny again. So I just want to thank everybody who, obviously, the employees who participated in this. I want to thank the Grants and Communications Team, Aden Johnson, and Omar De Leon, who helped put this together. Omar, obviously, our videographer. Omar, obviously, our videographer. And then behind the scenes, a lot of the graphics that you'll see on our website and things like that by Sessi de la Riva and then obviously Brian Perondi, our webmaster, who has really just been on top of all of this throughout this entire period. So I want to thank them and especially those employees who participated in this and who have been so gracious with their time through a pretty challenging time, but still being able to reflect a little bit of positive. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Manny, and congratulations to all of the teachers of the all of the Teachers of the Year and all of the recognitions. You know, we're glad that you're part of our team and keep up the good work. Okay, now we will have an opportunity for our San Diego County Office of Education Representative, Dr. Mark Scavarna, to make any comments. Should he choose?
Nope. No comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Scavarna, thank you. Now we have an update from our Superintendent, Dr. Jan.
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino. Welcome everyone to our board meeting. One more time, I want to acknowledge the Benita Vista High Virtual Choir for their performance, even though it was only half the performance of the national anthem. They're pretty awesome. So many talented students in our district. Today, I just want to let everybody know, we started summer school at Castle Park High, East Hills Academy, Hilltop High, Palomar, and San Ysidro High School. We have over 4,000 students who enrolled and we'll know more about the numbers over the next couple of days, but that's really, really great. This again is new territory because we're implementing a distance learning model during the summer program. Much appreciation to the principals of those schools, Vicky Mitrovic, Dr. Yasenia Barnard, Karen Hernandez, Miriam Dugan, Dr. Eduardo Reyes, as well as the support from the district office staff, Maria Esther Lizaraga, Doris Easterly in IT, Troy Mason, Nancy Nieto, Liliana Silva for the counselors, Brian Perondi as a webmaster from the Special Ed Department, Jacobo Dominguez, and Dr. Paula Madrigal. So just, we think everything's going well so far, but it is a, like I said, new territory for us. So thank you very much. We also want to recognize and congratulate the Karen Gallin Scholars for 2020. Each student is receiving a little more than $500. And those students are Janelle Singson from Southwest High, Jocelyn Montahermoso from Otay Ranch, Joseph Edjan and Kimberly Adapon from Sioux High, Christian Edresa from Olympian, and Rocheska and Si Fandino from Benita High. So congratulations to them. I also want to give a huge shout out to our Assistant Principals of Student Activities at the high schools for the behind-the-scenes organizational planning of the first-ever senior celebration parade at Southwestern College last week. It was truly amazing with every show, every school showing not only school spirit, but just total excitement and support for each senior and family that joined the parade. The 12-minute video that Manny Rubio posted on our Facebook page has now, to date, over 4,000 views. It was so great to see how happy the students and the families were driving through the parade. There was so much positive emotion displayed by everyone and I really don't know who got the most out of it, the seniors, the families, or the staff. Overall, it was one of the most feel-good events I have ever experienced. The best part was that all the schools were present and all schools were represented. And we have received many thanks and words of appreciation from both parents and students. And I just want to share one parent comment, and here's what they said. "My wife and I wanted to express our deepest gratitude to you and your team for putting this together. I must admit beforehand, we had our reservations about the idea of a senior celebration parade. However, to our surprise, this event exceeded our expectations. Regardless of where the graduated senior attended high school, all of the schools represented did such a fantastic job of making each and every graduating senior and family feel special. The purpose of this parade definitely hit the mark. We were so touched by this event and the reception we received along H Street and Southwestern College. We cannot thank you enough. Thank you. Thank you." So kudos and heartfelt appreciation to the Assistant Principals of ASB, who are Chris Alvarez from Benita, Michelle Owens from Castle Park, Diane Cave from Chula, David Lopez, Eastlake, Mark Carpizo, Hilltop, Jessica Neiman, Mar Vista, Andrea Courier, Montgomery, Sasha Scott, Olympian, Veronica Cording, Otay Ranch, Martha Garza, San Ysidro, Patricia Perez, Southwest, Deborah Morris, Sioux High. I also want to thank Sonia Picos and John Chakowsky, who helped facilitate those arrangements with Southwestern College and our Chulvista Police Department. I do want to provide a brief update on our 2021 Opening of Schools Planning Work Groups. Each group is composed of representatives from certificated and classified employee groups, students, and parents. These groups are a combination of staff, students, and parents who are interested in topics, as well as staff, students, and parents who have expertise on these topics. If you remember, we have four main groups that align with our LCAP goals. Group one, Work Group One, is focusing on teaching and learning. And within teaching and learning, there are four subcommittees. One is working on platform analysis and whose task is to conduct a comparison of the features of each of the platforms we're using. Number two is working on the scheduling options. Subcommittee three is working on a virtual school idea. And Subcommittee number four is working on support of our most vulnerable students in alternative education. Work Group Two is focusing on health and safety. This work group is looking at the health and safety conditions or considerations from four subcommittee perspectives. One being the district office, two being facilities, three being schools and classrooms, and four being staff and students. Work Group Three is parent and community engagement. And this work group is focused on the communication to both families and the community. So therefore, they have two subcommittees, one for each of those groups. And then Work Group Number Four is focused on systems and equity. And there are two subcommittees in that work group, Onboarding Communication and Technology, Facilities, and Operations. In total, we have close to 100 members who serve on these work groups. The goal is for these work groups to complete their plans by the end of June, so we have time to put those plans in place and prepare for the month of July. During the week of June 15th, we will be inviting all Sweetwater stakeholders to a town hall virtual meeting where each work group will share their ideas thus far with the intent to get further feedback and input. And then we'll also be sharing those plans with our Board of Trustees at the June 22nd Board Meeting. So we want to thank everyone for participating in those groups. Finally, I want to acknowledge publicly that as a district, we have lots of work to do to address and act upon social and racial injustices as it relates to our Black community and people of color overall. Agenda item H3 tonight is a commitment to recognize and support Black Lives Matters, commitment to fight racial injustice. Our goal is to bring forward a more detailed resolution to the board at the June 22nd Board Meeting. In my own dissertation study about the four essential roles of districts, the fourth essential role of high-performing school districts is to maintain an equity focus. And in maintaining an equity focus, districts must own past inequities and keep equity in the foreground through sharing data. Please know that we have purposefully and deliberately made equity a focus in our district by creating an actual department or division called Equity and Culture. And over the past four years of implementing our comprehensive equity plan, Dr. Foulter has shared the data around disproportionate suspensions and lower achievement for African-American students. In fact, the October 2019 LCAP Goal Number Two update, Dr. Foulter stated explicitly that for some student groups in SUHSD, systemic racial inequities result in disproportionately high discipline rates and low graduation rates. Sharing this data in a public way helps us to admit failures within our system. The comprehensive equity plan and combined with the culture and climate plans are district-wide efforts to end institutional racism and race-based disparities in our schools and district operations. Dr. Foulter concluded that presentation that evening with this slide that talked about racial equity requires both the window-looking-out, which is looking at insight on our students, our colleagues, our school, and our society, and a mirror-looking-in, insight into myself or into ourselves as individuals. And over the past five years, we have been developing with this plan the will to change when we deliberately focus on equity and culture. It's time to reflect on why, when we were facing budget reductions, many in our Sweetwater community offered up the elimination of the Equity and Culture Office. That alone tells me we have a lot of work we still need to do to address social and racial injustices. The Comprehensive Equities Plan's conclusion in that document states this in quotes, "Transforming school cultures is essential for sustained and positive change. Yet, research continues to demonstrate the systemic and structural organizational transformation is difficult to accomplish. It is also clear that school climate and culture cannot be imposed upon our change externally. Rather, the values, norms, rituals, and practices that are at the heart of school culture and essential for supporting teaching and learning must develop progressively. This typically occurs through strong, distributed leadership, a clear vision, buy-in from staff, students, and parents, a willingness to use data to monitor progress and ensure internal accountability, a deliberate, collective process to support planning and the implementation of effective practices, models, and tools with time for adequate reflection." One thing I have learned over time is that we can only control what we can control. We are educators and we have control of what we do in schools. Black lives do matter. And as SDSU's Vice President, Dr. Luke Wood, stated in his article in Sunday's Union Tribune, "Black Minds Matter Too." I want to end with a quote from the LCAP Goal Presentation from October that Dr. Foulter put in, and it says this, "If you have come to help me, you are wasting your time. But if you have come because your liberation is bound up with mine, then let us work together. Education can create the equitable society all students deserve. We have been committed to improving equity, respect, and value for each student, staff member, and family in our community. With recent events, we are even more resolute to address and take action to improve social and racial injustice in our district. Will you join us? Thank you and please stay safe."
Thank you, Dr. Jan. We will now have an update from our Student Board Representative, Ethan Collier. Ethan?
At this time, unfortunately, I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's nice to have you and I hope the end of your junior year went well, so...
I survived.
I think under these conditions, just surviving is just okay. So don't worry about it, okay? Okay. With that, now we will move, as we said at the outset of the meeting, we will move to Board Item O2. And just to frame Item O2, it's the surplus property sale of our property on Third Avenue. So Board Item O2 is the opening examination and declaration of all sealed proposals which have been received regarding the sale of district surplus property located at 435 Third Avenue in the city of Chula Vista and calling for qualifying oral bids as called for in Resolution 4670. We have provided all parties who have expressed an interest in the property with the district's YouTube link for this meeting. Parties who timely submitted the required pre-bid package by Friday, 5:00 p.m. have been provided with a separate call-in to this board meeting to participate in the bid process. The board is nearing the end of an extensive legal process to sell this property. The following is a brief summary of the material steps that we have completed. One, a 7-Eleven Facility Advisory Committee was convened and determined that the property will not be needed by the district for educational purposes and made a recommendation to the board that the property be declared surplus. Two, after considering the committee's recommendation, the board, by Resolution Number 4537, on January 22nd, 2018, declared the property surplus and declared its intent to sell the property. Three, on June 25th, 2018, by Resolution Number 4566, the board declared its intent to sell the property in accordance with the priority offering and procedures set forth in Education Code and Government Code. Four, pursuant to the board's resolution, staff sent notices offering the property for sale to certain other public agencies, as was required by law. However, these notices did not result in the sale of the property. Five, on April 27th, 2020, by Resolution Number 4670, the board directed the sale of the property in accordance with the competitive bid process required by the Education Code, established the minimum bid price and deposit, and established required procedures for the submission of proposals by responsible bidders. In accordance with Resolution Number 4670, tonight is the designated date and time for opening of the sealed bids and calling for oral bids from responsible bidders. At this point in the process, our General Counsel, Jennifer Carbuchia, and Purchasing Manager, George Williams, will conduct the process on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Once completed, the Board of Trustees will resume the process for purposes of taking action to accept, reject, or adjourn final acceptance of bids. We will now turn the process over to General Counsel, Jennifer Carbuchia.
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino. The board will now open, examine, and declare each written proposal that has been received. Each bidder has been assigned a bidder number. If two bidders make the same initial written bid and the same amount, the district will randomly assign the bid amount to one of those bidders by randomly picking between the two bidder numbers and then call for oral bids to give the other bidder an opportunity. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Good evening, President Tarantino, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Jan. As mentioned, my name is George Williams and I'm the purchasing manager for the district. I have two proposals received by Friday, 5:00 p.m. in front of me and will open each proposal and announce each one at this time. This is Proposal Number One. Proposal Number One is from Alliance Development Services, bidder number 316, with a bid amount of $5.7 million. I will now open Proposal Number Two. Proposal Number Two is from Mountain West Real Estate, bidder number 500, with a bid amount of $5.7 million. I will now take time to verify that along with each written proposal, the bidder submitted a complete and timely pre-bid package with the questionnaire and bid deposit. Okay, so all proposals submitted included a complete and timely pre-bid package. Both bidders, number 316, 316 Alliance Development Services, and bidder number 500, Mountain West Real Estate, submitted a bid for the same amount of 5.7 million. Both provided a timely and complete pre-bid package. Because there is a tie in the amount at this time, I will have put into a cup a paper with number 316 and 500. 316. And I will be pulling one of the numbers to assign to that bidder the highest price for its written proposal. So based on the tiebreaker, I declare the highest written proposal amount from those proposals for which there is a complete timely pre-bid package as the proposal received from Mountain West Real Estate, bidder number 500, at an amount of 5.7 million.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The board will now call for any oral bids that comply with the law and bid requirements. The procedures and the requirements for oral bids are as follows. At the conclusion of these, we will also make sure that both of our bidders are on the line and have heard the rules. Only persons who have timely submit a pre-bid package may submit an oral bid. To date, we have two bidders, bidder 316 Alliance and bidder 500, Mountain West. Any initial oral bid must exceed the highest written proposal by at least 5% after deducting the real estate broker's commission. The method of calculation of this initial oral bid amount was calculated and is available upon request. Subsequent bids after the initial bid will be accepted in a minimum increment of $10,000 increases. We will give one minute between the time the first oral bid is received and each subsequent request. We will also provide one minute from the time Mr. Williams requests oral bids. Each bidder has been assigned a bidder number, as previously stated. To place a bid, please identify yourself by your bid number and the amount. If two bidders attempt to make an oral bid in the same amount, the district again will randomly assign the bid amount to one and call for higher bids. Once no higher bid is made, the bidder number and the bidder amount for the highest oral bid will be declared. Acceptance of this bid may be final only after the bidder has submitted the bid in writing on the mandatory bid form with the additional documentation, including an increase in bond amount. Mr. Williams, at this time, will you identify the minimum amount of the initial oral bid, and then call for oral bids?
Yes, Counsel. The minimum amount for the initial opening is $5,985,000. Are there any oral bids from the qualified bidders?
Yes, there is. This is Greg Lamarcas, and I am okay to, I will bid that amount, $5,985,000.
Would you please provide us with your bidder number?
That's bidder number 316.
Okay, thank you. Right. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $5,985,000? I will allow you one minute.
This is bidder 500. We'd like to extend the $10,000 increment.
Okay. Okay.
Do I have to give the total?
No. Give me that plus $10,000. Yeah. Thank you.
Is that back to me now, George?
I'll call it out. Okay. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more in the amount of... I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,500,000?
Was that $10,000 higher than the $5,985,000? Or did we jump at 20,000?
No, it would be $10,000 more than the $5,000... Let's see. Excuse me, let me, okay. Okay, so is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more in the amount of $5,995,000?
Yes, George. This is bidder number 316, and we will go to $6,500,000.
Okay, perfect. Is there an additional bid for at least $10,000 more than the $6,500,000? I will allow one minute.
George, this is bidder 500. We'll go to the $6,015,000.
Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,015,000? I will allow one minute.
George, bidder 316 will bid $6,250,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,250,000? I'll allow one minute.
Bidder 500 will go to $6,350,000.
Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,350,000? I will allow you one minute.
George, bidder 316 will go to $6,450,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,450,000? I will allow you one minute.
$6,550,000.
Bidder 500 will go to $6,550,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,550,000? I will allow you one minute.
George, bidder number 316 will go to $6.1 million.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6.1 million? I will allow you one minute.
Bidder 500 will go to $6,110,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,110,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bidder 316 will go to $6,120,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,120,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bidder 500 would like to go to $6,200,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,200,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bidder 316 will go to $6,210,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,210,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bidder 500 will go to $6,220,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,220,000? I'll allow you one minute.
316 will go to $6,230,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,230,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bidder 500 will go to $6,240,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,240,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bidder 316 will go to $6,240,000.
We're, bidder 316, we're at $6,240,000, so it'd be at least $10,000 more than that amount.
I knew that. I was just trying to see if you guys were still aware over there. We're at $6,250,000, bidder 316.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,250,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bidder 500 will bid $6,260,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,260,000? I'll allow you one minute.
316 will go to $6,270,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than $6,270,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bitter 500 would like to go to 6,300,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least 10,000 more than 6,300,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bitter 316 will go 6,310,000 dollars.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least 10,000 more than 6,310,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bitter 500 will bid 6,320,000 dollars.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than 6,320,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bitter 316 will go to 6,330,000, I believe, George, right? 30 or 40?
30,000, but we can take 40.
We'll leave it at 30. I'm sure we'll get there.
Okay, 6,330,000, thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than 6,330,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bitter 500 would like to bid 6,500,000.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than 6,500,000? I will allow you one minute.
Bitter 316 will go to 6,510.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than 6,510,000? I'll allow you one minute.
Bitter 500 will go to 6,520.
Thank you. Is there an oral bid for at least $10,000 more than 6,520,000? I'll allow you one minute.
George, I think 316 is gonna let that go.
Thank you. Mr. Tarantino, at this time, there are no additional oral bids. Would you please allow a two-minute recess to make our recommendation?
We will take a two-minute recess to allow staff to make their final recommendation. So it is now 7:13. We will reconvene at 7:15, if that's okay with both of... Both you, Mr. Williams and Ms. Carbuccia.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bidders will be notified of the time and date of that meeting.
Okay. The Board then accepts the oral bid from Mountain West Real Estate in the amount of $6,520,000 as the highest oral bid received in conformance with the terms and conditions specified by the Board. This oral bid exceeds the highest proposal by at least 5%. As was mentioned by General Counsel Carbuccia, final acceptance shall not be made until the bidder submits the bid in writing on the mandatory bid form. The form is to be submitted to the purchasing manager on or before Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, at 4:30 PM. The Board will make its final acceptance, as was stated by General Counsel Carbuccia, at an adjourned session of this meeting, which will be held within the next 10 days. Date to be determined as provided in our bylaws. Do I have a motion to accept a oral bid from bidder number 500, Mountain West Real Estate, in the amount of $6,520,000 for the sale of the Third Avenue property, which is located at 4...
435.
435, Third Avenue. Thank you. Thank you for all the highlights.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, move by Mr. Segura, seconded by Mrs. Hall. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Collier?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, both Mr. Williams and Ms. Carbuccia for your assistance in this matter, and also to bidder number 50316 for your interest in the property and for your participation in this process.
Thank you.
Frank, I'd like to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Assistant Superintendent Dr. Aguirre and his team for the work they did for the sale of this property.
Good. Okay. Any other Board comments?
I think I would like to second Mr. Segura's remarks. I think Dr. Aguirre has really been on top of this and shown again, once again, how valuable his work has been. And Mr. Williams, I really appreciate everything you've done too. Tonight, it was quite a nice outcome. And I thank the both companies that put in bids and the staff for all their support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Solis.
Yeah, I wanted to say the same thing, but also to our auctioneer, Mr. Williams, he did a great job. So, everybody, thank you. Thank you for everything you did.
Mr. Pike?
And of course Jenny, I forgot to mention Jenny.
Mr. Pike?
I echo all my colleagues. That was excellent. Mr. Williams did it.
I think we should take a break. I think I need a cold shower. Just kidding, guys. Just kidding. Okay. Then we will go ahead and move. Thank you, guys, for everything. And I guess we'll reconvene within 10 days. Is that correct? Date to be determined according to our schedules.
According to Ms. Osiris' scheduling, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, let's go ahead and we are now going to, let's see, where am I? We will now move to item D1, which is
Dan Rosenberg.
Is now exiting.
To conduct a public hearing and gather community feedback on the Sweetwater Union High School District's preliminary 2020-2021 proposed budget. Before we hold the public hearing,
Is now exiting.
Before we hold the public hearing, staff will provide a presentation to the Board on the proposed budget. Dr. Sockholm?
Good evening, Board President Tarantino. Deanne, before we get started, are you gonna project it, or should I do that on my end?
I just gave you the authority.
Okay, thank you. Does everyone see the presentation okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So, again, good evening, Board President Tarantino, Board Trustees, Superintendent Janney, Cabinet, and the public. What we will be sharing here today is an update on the state budget, and certainly the prior agenda item will definitely help as we share some of the details related to 2021 and our out years. So, that is some good news to start that off with. And so, I'm gonna cover a couple of things in the next few. There's quite a few slides, but I want to highlight, again, from a transparency standpoint, where we stand with the Governor's May revision, you know, how that ties into the revenue and expense assumptions that we build in terms of the budget and then the out years. Because what we have at this point, we rely on what was shared on May 14th. It is a period that there is a lot of movement at the state, with the state legislature, and how things will evolve over the next few days and next few weeks. And that's typical, what we experienced during this timeframe. But what I'll share here in the next few slides, it is a significant change from where we were at back in January. And then also tethered to that, from a budget standpoint, is the cash. So, I think in terms of comparing it to last few years, the key factor in the Governor's proposal not only impacts the budget, but it also has a significant impact to cash. So, we'll walk through those slides as well. And so, what we have here is what we've shared in the prior presentations, you know, our budget timeline. Kind of always that point of reference as to where we're at with the budget development process. And so, just a few weeks ago, we shared with the Board where we were at with Third Interim. And I want to have that as a point of reference, because as we build the budget, the SACS report, what you have in your packet today is known as a standardized account code structure report. It covers all of our funds. As part of the preliminary hearing, this is the initial draft. What we will bring to you on the 22nd of June will be the comprehensive packet. It has different components to that report, which is known as a criterion standards, the technical review checks, and a few other items to make the packet complete. But at this point, we're sharing with the Board what we know based on that May revision from the Governor. And so, one thing to note that is going to be unique this go-around is the fact that typically, in the way that the ed code is also written, the budget always follows the Local Control Accountability Plan presentation. This year, as a result of the Governor's executive order back in March, the LCAP will be deferred and presented to the Board in December. So, that is something that's unique. What we're bringing forward to you today is just the budget, and then the budget adoption on the 22nd. And so, I'm gonna start off with 1920, because the SACS report, as I mentioned earlier, has two parts to it. It looks at where we're at, where we project. It's kind of another update on the district's budget for 2019-20. So, we look at what June 30th will look like. And so, that's one piece of it. And why that's so critical is because that ending balance, that projected ending balance, is what starts off the beginning of the 2021 budget plan. And that's the other component that's on that report that you have. And so, I wanted to highlight here, as our starting point, what you see in column E in comparison to column D, which we just presented to the Board about a month ago, where we were at with a snapshot of this June 30th. And so, we continue to do our work, looking at expenditures, looking at how things are trending out through the end of the year. What you see is a key change. A few weeks ago, we were indicating a $3.5 million shortfall. And at that point, when I shared that with the Board on May 11, I indicated at that point, it still had the placeholder that we've been carrying since First Interim as a result of the work with the county office, in which they had requested that we add an additional $3 million of expenditures. So, as we get to the end of the year with payroll, reviewing that and seeing how things have transpired and where we're at with our cash flow projections, we've made that adjustment. We've in essence removed that $3 million placeholder, because we do not see that materializing in our budget at this point in time for 1920. That is something that we shared with the county office representatives last week. I even had shared this back in May, that again, the trend didn't appear that we would be going that route. So, what you see here is that adjustment of $1.2 million. And that will lead into what we then review in terms of the 2021 year. Now, certainly, it doesn't cover our economic uncertainties, because as you can see at the bottom, we've got zero. We're required by law to have that 2% set aside. But at least, all of the work that the Board and leadership and the staff and a lot of labor partners have come together have helped turn that around. So, where we were at in the beginning of the year, and this section's report or this slide kind of tells that narrative, how we've crosswalked that throughout the year. And so, we've now been able to shift things in that positive direction. And I want to focus on that, because as you see the detail that we shared with the Board for 2021, Sweetwater was moving in that direction. And you'll see, obviously, the Governor's budget, the COVID, has changed that. But I want to highlight that collective work is helping now and in the next year. And so, going into the next few slides, just to provide that backdrop, because the school district in Sweetwater is not alone. All school districts within the state are very much dependent on what happens at the state. And so, when the Governor shared the budget back in January, the state was in a good place. There was surplus revenues, surplus budget plan. He had made a lot of commitments, investments in various areas that he proposed at the time. But unfortunately, things changed right around the March-April timeframe. And so, a lot of those proposals were tabled because of the economic projections that were coming forward. And also, because as a state, they did not have the income tax revenues, the receipts that they normally rely on from April 15th. That is deferred now to July 15th. And that's gonna be key, as I highlight, you know, the budget in general, how that is impacting Sweetwater and other districts up and down the state by not having those revenues or those projections available by the State Department of Finance, what it does to the projections, and then what it does to cash. So, we'll go over that piece of it. So, again, very much a very different scenario than where we were at in January. And so, the next few slides are just kind of providing that variance of what COVID has in essence resulted from an economic standpoint for the state. The state is projecting, in the Governor's proposal or update or may revise, a $54 billion shortfall. And unlike prior years, you know, things tended to be a little bit static in the current year. So, when you look at 2019-20, we're expecting a $4 billion shortfall. So, when he looks at that plan at the state level, he looks at how things are progressing in the current year, and then what's our impact in the next year. So, we haven't experienced this in quite some time. Particularly, you know, comparing it to the Great Recession, you know, that's where we had a lot of volatility. But if you look at 2018-19, you know, the budget and may revise, they were kind of pretty spot-on, right on target. But this shortfall in the current year, which again is unexpected and has an impact eventually onto our funding, but also the out year, so a total here of about $18 billion of that state $54 billion. So, 18 billion of the $54 billion has been, or at least in the Governor's proposal, you know, pushed down the schools to help balance that budget. And this is just a graphical presentation. You can see kind of in the last few years, given that plan, how it goes down considerably and how that impact will play out for Sweetwater. Again, this is just another slide to kind of show where we were at January. As I was mentioning, you know, we had $1.2 billion that was gonna be invested in the local control funding formula. Very different environment now with a negative $6.5 billion. And we'll touch upon here the cost of living adjustment factor, because that amount has been suspended. So, we were planning things back in January, assuming a cost of living of 2.29%. And why that's important, because that's a key variable that goes into that funding calculation, under the LCFF. But now, it was anticipated it being at 2.31, and I'll share in another slide. It's been in essence removed. It's 0%. Again, this is just a slide at the bottom. You note that it's $54 billion, kind of seeing where the state revenues are at. And the next few slides just indicate, you know, again, that the state is very much driven by, you know, three key tax revenue sources. And one point I just want to note, because something for all of us to continue to monitor, not only the impact for 2021, but it's the impact for 21-22. And this point specifically, because California's structure of revenue sources is very much dependent on top earners, and that creates a lot of volatility. So, with all the movements with the stock market as an example, if capital gains are not there in this particular tax year in 2020, that's gonna impact our planning ahead for the next budget cycle. So, something for us to really keep an eye on as we move forward in term of our planning. And again, this is just another graphical view of those tax revenues. Again, those revenues at the state level, how then eventually that triples down to the local level and what school districts get allocated. You just have different scenarios here of the personal income tax, sales tax, and corporate tax based on what LEO and what others projected. And this too, just another graph showing how important, and again, I'll highlight in a little bit in terms of those tax revenues, the income tax revenues being shifted from April to July, how critical that is into the overall budget. And so, what the Governor did, he looked at what are ways that can help mitigate that loss, particularly the school districts in terms of that $18 billion. So, he looked, first and foremost, was the rainy day fund. So, this was a vision that Governor Brown had put in place, and along with the voters, under proposition two, that created that savings account, in essence. Right now, it has about $16.2 billion that has accumulated over the last few years. Had this not been here, what we would have seen in the Governor's May revise would have been far worse. So, at least this created a little bit of that safety net, so that the impact wouldn't have been as bad. And this is, again, is very different than the Great Recession, because it came upon us so quickly, so significantly in terms of the economics. But what is noted here, and what the Governor put into his proposal, is looking at this rainy day fund and the legislation and how it reads is he can only draw upon half of it in the first year. So, he's got it built into the multi-year plan that in 2021, he's gonna draw $7.8 billion of that $16.2. And that's all he can draw upon that. And then we'll utilize the remaining balance over the next two years, for a total of three years. He also utilizes a smaller component too, the public school system stabilization account. That had $524 million in there. He's utilizing that as well to help mitigate some of that shortfall. The other thing that he proposed and is reflected in our budget when we share that piece, he does have an offset. He knows a lot of school districts, you know, over the last few years, the ramp-up of STIR's pension costs, PERS pension cost for our classified and certificated employees has gone up considerably. So, as you can see here, we were initially planning, a lot of our work, what we started back in January, was assuming 18.4% for STIRs and 22.68%. He's made a kind of an offset contribution, redirecting some funds to bring those rates down. So, we are, that is factored into our budget plan that we're presenting tonight. But again, it could always be subject to change, given any conversations at the state level. The next piece too, that I want to discuss, because I want to provide some clarifying components to it, because there's been a lot of conversation regarding the Federal CARES Act. And there's two parts to it. The first part, and I had shared this during the Third Interim, the district receives, or has already received via the CDE, the allocation of the direct stimulus payment to the district. What the district's entitled to is about $8.2 million. Now, those monies don't drop into a bank account, you know, from the federal government. We have to submit in essence reimbursement claims on a quarterly basis before those monies come back. The district has until September 2021 to utilize those funds. Those funds are to be used in areas of distance learning, sanitation supplies, and other areas similar to what is used with Title I and some of those other federal restricted programs. So, those are kind of, that's kind of the umbrella of what that $8.2 million that has been allocated. Again, that's one component. So, it's in essence supplemental dollars. The other component, which is included in the Governor's proposal, the state has an allocation of CARES Act. What he has indicated that a portion thereof of that amount will be used to help offset learning loss, learning loss mitigation. That too is in essence supplemental. And that's this next slide here. The piece that's related to the Governor's amount, we don't know those amounts just yet. There's a lot of speculation. Ed sources put out some numbers. Other agencies have put out numbers. We have not received those specifics from the Department of Finance or from the CDE. So, there's something we're awaiting. But what we do know at this point is that the Governor has indicated that in order to use those funds, a LEA will need to submit a learning continuity plan that will need to be presented to the Board. And those funds, or whatever the amount ends up settling to be, have to be spent by December 30th. And these are the categories that the Governor has shared. Again, as you can see, it's that supplemental or in addition to extending the school year academic, additional academic services. So, this area, there's still, I think, a lot more that needs to be provided in terms of guidance. So, at this point, we don't have any of those numbers into our general fund restricted budget. So, I just want to note that, because these monies do not help offset the general fund operating budget at this point. So, I just wanted to provide some of that clarification there. The other piece, the other item that the Governor has committed, again, to help offset some of that shortfall, is a portion of the state's general fund to be used towards K-14, within the community colleges. Other things that the Governor included in his budget that are similar to what was done during the Great Recession was providing school districts some flexibilities on a couple of items. One item relates to, and I've already reached out to the county office to inquire, and it'll tie in when we talk about the cash flows, is an exemption from the cash flow or the cash deferrals for hardship reasons. And I'll go into a little bit of detail about that. The other piece is looking at the routine restricted maintenance. That is a calculation that we need to set aside. 3% of the total general fund costs, so that's unrestricted and restricted together, we set those aside for routine restricted maintenance. For the district, it runs about $14 million. There's just one component that the Governor has noted on there, that it's part of what we call is a book entry at the end of the year. Our portion of the state's contribution to the STIRs plan, so about 20 million, it would trigger an additional add-on cost. So, that's one of the things that we're working through. It's not built into our SACS report right now, so we need to see how this works, because it would kick out on our criterion standards until we have further confirmation from the state. The other piece too, that'll be highlighted here shortly, is ed code allows the districts to borrow up to 75% of other fund balances that are in the bank account or treasury accounts. He's proposing, again, to help alleviate some of the cash deferral impacts, increasing that to 85%. We'll touch upon that. And then a few things also, the use of property sales for one-time general fund purposes, that helps as well. One other thing that's still being discussed, because now that the state legislature has been reviewing the budget, and we'll touch upon that too, in terms of where they stand, because they have countered the Governor's proposal. There's also discussion, and again, goes back to what was done back during the Great Recession. These areas that you see on the right, the legislature is going to be having conversations here with the Governor probably in the next week in order to meet the June 15th deadline at the state level to have a budget complete. You know, we're looking at that reduction, or again, going back to that routine restricted maintenance. There's been conversation about holding our average daily attendance for school districts kind of in essence status quo through next year, because many of us are in different districts, are gonna be in different platforms. How do we capture attendance? How do we monitor that from a distance learning standpoint? One thing too, is what was done, and as I understand it, with Sweetwater, I think it was the adult ed program back in 2011. There is conversations at the state that's being had of looking at other funding categoricals, and adult ed is one of them, and there's a few other like CTE programs, other pre-technical education programs, that if they ended the year in a positive balance, that would be allowed to be moved over to general fund to help cover any shortfall. Again, that's something we're awaiting, to have specific guidance. It wasn't necessarily in the Governor's may revise, but can certainly evolve here over the next few, like next week or so. So, something to keep in mind, and I'll also touch upon that when I get to the adult ed slide. So, aside from the budget, knowing where we're at with the economics at the state level, what the Governor has introduced, again, something is noted on here, the playbook from many years ago, how things were managed at the state level, what districts are entitled to in terms of revenue, is they pushed off payments, cash payments, to our treasury bank account, in essence. What's a little bit more time-sensitive is that the proposal already kind of goes into effect this month. So, the apportionment that Sweetwater, and I'll jump here to the next slide to have a visual, the apportionment that Sweetwater would be getting this month, that we've balanced out the end of the year amongst the various funding sources within local control funding formula, is about $33 million. At this point, the Governor's proposal, now we need things to be finalized by the state legislature and the Governor, because I know the state controller's waiting to get the green light, in essence. They would not pay Sweetwater. The state controller would not give the Sweetwater School District $33 million in cash this month. Instead, they would defer it to next month. So, they're pushing that out. That's gonna cause, you know, for us, we're having to see how we can still make payroll, and I'll go through the details, so you'll see that as well. But that's a key factor in how the state is balancing, because they don't have the revenues from those income taxes. And so, they've bought themselves a month. Because of that July 15th deadline, they said, "We're not gonna pay you." So, I've always compared it of, you get your paycheck next month, but you still have your mortgage due this month. So, there's a timing issue, right? We still have to make our obligations this month. What is also concerning and how that's being balanced is this last quarter of the fiscal year. The Governor's proposal is saying, "You're entitled these amounts during that timeframe, that last quarter. We're gonna push all of those amounts we would have paid into the positive in your treasury account. We're gonna give that to you possibly in July, maybe August." We haven't received definitive timeframe. We're just right now assuming it's July. So, that's a lot. Again, three months being pushed forward to July. And so, again, that's a lot of what we experienced back in the Great Recession. We didn't come out of that, it wasn't until, I think, it was the second year of local control funding formula where that last deferral went away. It was 2014-15. So, that's key, and it's gonna be a significant part of the budget conversation. This slide here is just indicating that, again, that cost of living number basically got zeroed out of not only our LCFF, but some of our other categorical, other funding sources we get, whether it's mandate block grant, special education, and so forth. We didn't see, we will not see those in there at this point. And then this gives you a snapshot of what our grant will look like for our high school level. This is the base grant that school districts, as Sweetwater, receive for this great span. What we had this year, 1920, was $9,329. When we add that cost of living adjustment, that would increase it by $215. So, this gives us our new revised baseline, which would have been the amount for 2021. But the Governor's proposal has about a 10% reduction. But the governor's proposal has about a ten percent reduction. That cost of living and then another change for a total of ten percent. With that, our revenue per student in this grade span will go from ninety-three twenty-nine to eight thousand five hundred and ninety. So that's a significant change, right? Just, just in that timeframe, or that, that dollar amount. And then this next slide, and again, this is just K twelve throughout the state. You can see how each grade span, but for Sweetwater specifically, seven, eight grade spans would take a reduction of eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. And nine twelve would take a, a reduction of what I just mentioned earlier, that nine hundred fifty-four. So that's quite a bit. And again, this is where a lot of the conversations have been centered, been centered around with the assembly and the legislature, with the senate, senate and assembly. What I'm just sharing here is just to put things also kind of as, as a reminder, what local control funding formula did was revert back to the funding levels in two thousand seven, eight. So as you all know, it's not the same dollar, right? When we kind of look at that over a course of time, this in essence is just indicating it's, it's not the same. We're, we're not at nearly those levels. We've had additional costs, additional pension costs that were added on. So we're well below where we should have been funded. And again, we're going into the twenty twenty-one budget year with the baseline funding of two thousand seven, eight. That was the intention of the local control funding formula with periodic cost of living adjustments. This next slide is just providing the board and the public a, a highlight of not only our base funding, we have other programs that will be impacted by this governor's proposal. Our California Partnership Academies, we've heard that it could be possibly as much as fifty percent reduction. Our adult ed program, I'll share this in a little bit, is what we reduced it by one point seven million dollars in revenues after we had conversations with, with the director and Mr. Superintendent on that. Our CTE program, that could be impacted. Mr. Kovar has been connecting with the state too. Hopefully it doesn't impact us so much for what's been awarded for twenty twenty-one, but we would see a change in the subsequent year. Our after-school program, we were working with Dr. Alvarez and Ms. Delgado on this to see how we can manage that if that does materialize as well. And then our strong workforce is part of the grant, which is also part of CTE. So again, this is not just impacting our base local control funding formula. It's impacting other programs that we have within the district. So now when we take all of this information, we put it into our assumptions. So again, our key driver, our enrollment numbers, our average daily attendance, it runs about ninety-four percent. You know, a lot of what's reflected on here is also taking into account what we anticipate if there is a reduction as well from two of us to elementary school districts. They have passed, you know, the expansion of the seventh and eighth grade levels at their school district. So that's something too that we're monitoring closely as to what that'll do to our enrollment numbers, and that is factored in here as well. And then these other items are just, again, taken straight off of what was in the governor's may revise. We get these numbers from, from the state and also from School Services of California as to where we build these, these numbers. The other item I wanted to pull out and, and highlight on this particular slide, it's the last slide. And this goes back to the prior board action and the bidding related to Third Avenue. So what you see here and, and why this is going to be key and how it'll help the general fund at this point in time, because we're awaiting this bidding process, we're awaiting the property going into escrow and then closing the transaction. We have to, because it's not a, a complete done deal in essence. At this point in time, we had to show a two million dollar contribution. This is why it's so critical, because if we got the, the property sold for six point five million dollars, that six point five million dollars is going to help cover the debt service out of what's in Fund Forty, because L Street, that, that, in essence, that mortgage payment is paid from Fund Forty. So the sale proceeds of what the board just took action on, that's going to go into Fund Forty. It'll help alleviate this, this, or cover this cost. So then general fund will not need to make that payment. But because that first payment is due in September, about one point five million of that two million is due in September. So ideally, hopefully, we can have this transaction closed before then. Then that'll help the fund, the, the, our budget projections and will then be reflected at first interim. So that's why that prior transaction is so key and it's tied to what occurs here on the general fund side of things. This next slide is just also highlighting that out of our general fund, we do have some programs where we do have to carve out some monies, where we have to do some contributions. Special education is, is our largest contribution, as noted here. Our CTE program, and what you see why there's a key change from twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two is because they've received, the program has received some grants that have helped the program, which relies less on the general fund, covering those, those shortfalls or those flat costs. But if we, the assumption then when we look at the out-years is that was a one-time, one-year grant. Again, if we apply and receive those funds, it could help bring down the, the out-year projection. The routine restricted maintenance is what I mentioned earlier, this fourteen million dollars. That is what, again, the state legislature is having conversations of possibly could that number or what's going to be required change. So that's something we're, we're awaiting guidance on that. What you see here is our required two percent economic uncertainty. So we have built that into our, our budget for twenty twenty-one, and then you'll see that in our out-year projections because that is the, the required by law, two percent economic uncertainty set aside. I know many of us could argue and say, well, we're in an economic uncertain time. How could we, you know, could we use this? But at this point in time, there's been no flexibility in changing that ed code provision. So that stands, and so in order for the district to have a, a positive budget, we had to factor this into our, our planning. And so how we, we set this up, because when we're building the SACS report, as you do entries, you know, it's a real life document, you know, there's not opportunity to kind of stop and, and run it as a point in time. So we actually had to work with our team, and this is all this first phase here that I'm sharing with the board, is again, going back to January, when we started our work with the principals, with the department directors and managers and the board, when we were having the board workshops in January with the budget committee group that we started those conversations in February. All of that is included in this phase. So we didn't want it to get lost and what you'll see in subsequent slides from the COVID impact and the state impact. This is what Sweetwater was doing over the course of the last few months and, and some key decisions and, and some key factors that went into, you know, where this is and what it's reflected today. This is demonstrating Sweetwater was turning that corner. As I showed early on, here's that two thousand nineteen estimated actuals at one point two million. That rolls up into the start of that twenty twenty-one year. Now here are all our, our revenues, our expenditures, everything we've accounted for in some of those solutions. Gave us an operating budget bottom line, and doesn't factor the reserves. But from an operational standpoint, this is the first time in almost two years where we were in the positive. So six point three million. As I shared with you earlier, the economic uncertainty amount is nine point two million. So we weren't quite there. We still needed to solve for a lot more to get to that number. But this was a huge, this was a significant milestone. And so I wanted to share that in that stage because this was our fiscal recovery plan, and there was a lot of work by a lot of parties to get us where we're at here. So this, this was the turning point. But we also built this budget assuming normal return to school like we normally would in any course of any bu- bu- budget year, you know, starting how, how we would need to, right, start the year. But as we started to evaluate, you know, and have conversations, as Dr. Jenny mentioned earlier, there's various work groups looking at, you know, how schools are going to start on August third. And so we started to factor in what's currently in the budget that may not be in the budget, right? Because of some of these changes. So this wasn't finance doing this in isolation. This was us working with programs, with, with various folks in HR and labor relations and other conversations they were having with labor partners as well. And so what you see here is we've made some adjustments to a portion of the lunch duty stipends for first semester, both certificated and classified. We've also made an assumption about our fall sports. Again, depending on how those return back in the fall, it's about seventy-five percent. We've adjusted that on a favorable standpoint. Some of the official fees that go with that for fall sports, our VAPA program connecting with, with Mr. Kovar, about our, our summer camp not occurring. So that, that was built in the budget, but we took that out. And then we reached out to Dr. Gary and Ron Malone and Jennifer Sather about, you know, the operational piece of things, utilities, bus transportation, you know, what would that look like for at least maybe three months or so? And so they've provided us those numbers. And then also we worked with, with HR and Labor Relations and our CSCEA partners of looking at the conversations that were had about probationary staff. Because if we're not going to be in a traditional setting, you know, was there some oper-, you know, is there some way there that we would adjust for that? And that was, is captured here. So again, it's, it's a different environment. We certainly didn't plan this to, to happen in this manner, but we did factor that in. So that was three point five million dollars. So if we take what I shared with you in that Phase One of our fiscal recovery plan, looked at these things that are possibly going to happen. Again, if, if things shift depending on our timing and, and these items evolving, this three point five million can change, right? So when we get to first interim, it might be a little different, but at least this is what we could identify right now. And so when we take that, this was kind of our, our next stage. We took our fiscal recovery plan with those distance learning consideration savings. That then helped, because again, column A is not going to change. It's going to stay static at the one point two. But our column B bottom line operationally got us to nine point six million dollars. Now again, not traditional, that's not typically how we, we account for this, but we wanted to demonstrate that and separate that out. So that, in that regard, would get us to the nine point two million dollars that we need for economic uncertainties. So now shifting from here, now we took what we get from the governor. We had to await the LCFF calculator that's prepared by FICMAT. They had to put all those different factors into the calculator. And, and this is a snapshot from that calculator. This isn't Sweetwater's calculate, I mean, we put in our enrollment numbers and kind of those variables, but everything else is static. And what you see here, this is the, the calculator that's provided, it was released over Memorial Day weekend for the Director of Fiscal Services, and I started to look at these numbers. And it, it's pretty significant. So i- if you look at the twenty twenty-one column that we highlighted in green, the funding that is the governor's proposal would translate to Sweetwater at three hundred and fifty-five million dollars. When you take that number and compare it to nineteen twenty, you can see that significant change. That's forty-one million dollars out of the district's revenue, like that, real quick. And then we started to look back, because we gave a snapshot of when LCFF got implemented, because it was in thirteen, fourteen, was the first year. And so we started to look back. What Sweetwater would be getting in twenty twenty-one as revenue is less than what was given in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So that, that, that's a significant change. And we all know too that costs from the time period of sixteen seventeen to now have gone up. There's been a lot of escalating costs. So keeping that in mind of a reduced revenue inflow to the district and then increased costs. So you're going to see this number on this next slide, you know, drastically change the work that we've been doing thus far. So with those COVID may revision impacts, what you see then from an operational standpoint is a twenty-four million dollar negative impact to Sweetwater. We would have to solve and pivot quickly to solve this and, and close this. Now, I will share on the next slide what we need to have for reserves to truly have that balanced budget. But that's where you can see here the change, right? We were at three ninety-six, there's that three fifty-five, immediately gone out of the district's budget. And then you see that change. One thing here that I wanted to note, and I've received questions about, is contracted services. So one item, through a budget process, and you see how this has decreased on the supply side of things. We've been working very closely with our departments and our schools in classifying expenditures properly. So this is in essence primarily a shift of what was typically coded in a supply, what we know as the object code range four thousand. And we properly classified it in the object code five thousand, which is contract services. So this doesn't necessarily mean it was more cost. A lot of it was alignment. One factor that is a, a increase is we've got about a four hundred thousand dollar insurance premium increase as part of our, our joint power authority, our insurance kind of group that we're part of and, and part of the county office. That premium, there are escalating costs that, of the coverages that are provided to the district that we are seeing an uptick. So that is a, a true cost, but I wanted to point that out because I've received those questions. But when you're looking at this in totality from what the governor has provided, it's twenty-four million. So if we go to the next slide, so here's that twenty-four million dollars, and that's all part of what you have on that SACS report in detail. Here's that nine point two million dollars that we'd have to have set aside. We're also required to have set aside for other items that we keep. It's kind of on the balance sheet, our assets in essence, of our stores inventory, what we, we estimate are typically donations to schools that are, need to roll over, some of our prepaid expenditures, and also this qualified zone academy bond that will be maturing on September twenty twenty-one. Those monies have to be set aside. They are a reserve to cover those items. And so again, we work closely, all of this information for the board and the public to be aware of. We have reviewed this with the county office. We had a meeting with them last week. But even prior to last week, they've seen our LCFF calculator. So we share these documents with them, so they're aware of where the district's financial position is at. So you can see to have in essence a balanced budget and where we're at right now, it's a forty million dollar shortfall. And so if we, if we did nothing to solve this, that's why you've heard me say the compounding effect. This twenty-four million rolls into this next year. So when we're starting to look at those out-year projections, it builds upon that. And that's why you can see that three year, it gets to a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. So it's pretty draconian. That's been my new word, draconian. I think that's a lot of what then led into a lot of the conversations at the state legislature of what this would do to, to, to school districts. And again, not Sweetwater, Sweetwater's not alone in this particular scenario. This next slide is just looking at our restricted fund. So again, we normally keep that balance. A lot of what's carried forward here is the routine restricted maintenance. So a lot of this normally balances out. And so now I want to shift from the budget and how the cash flows are tethered to the, to the budget piece of it. And so we take those revenues and those expenditures that you saw in the prior slide. Then we look at timing. The state as an example, under local control funding formula, there's three different components. The state aid, so they give us various increments throughout the year. Typically, the lowest increments are in July and August, and you kind of cut that in half. And then we, we plan on those throughout the year. Again, what's been factored in the governor's proposal is to not give us that June payment and then also that last quarter payment. It'd be about timing. We also have the educational protection accounts. It was part of Prop thirty and Prop fifty-five. Districts get those monies, which is an element of LCFF. We get that on a quarterly basis. And then property taxes, we get typically the largest is obviously in December and then in April. We get some small inflows throughout every month for supplemental property taxes. And then federal revenues, there's always different timings and more timings of those when we submit our quarterly claim. Special education, when we get the IDEA monies. So we look at all of that. Those are our cash receipts. We look at that timing of when that, that happens. Then we look at our payroll and our vendor payments. You know, we, we look at trends. We know at certain times throughout the year, like with payroll, we have a little bit of an uptick because we pay stipends on a, on a semester basis. Or like at the end of the year, like this month, we're going to have a little bit higher because we pay our annual stipends. And then we look at vendor invoices. So we look at all those timing factors related to these obligations for cash. This is what's in our, I'll say our bank account, but it's our treasury account. This is what, what we have in cash. What education code says, because of those timing factors, now, now that's timing, not overspending. It's the timing piece of it. You can temporarily borrow from other funding sources that you have, such as our adult fund, such as our cafeteria fund, such as our capital funds, excluding the bond fund, that you can borrow up- that you can borrow up to seventy-five percent of whatever is in that bank account at that point in time of the borrowing. The governor's may revise to provide flexibility to school districts because of these deferrals. He's increased that to eighty-five percent. So we'll have to wait and see how that plays out if that gets approved in the final budget. But the ed code says, if you borrow in that last hundred and twenty days, you have the entirety of the next year to pay for it. So this is where again, the alignment of what the state is proposing, you know, aligning to those last hundred and twenty days, that April, May, and June deferral. And what we base that borrowing that we're taking from the other fund, you base it on your interest rate of the county pool. Right now, it's been running about two percent. When we have these scenarios, and again, just in a traditional sense, outside of the deferrals. So right now, just even if we weren't to factor those in, at this point in time, we were going to need borrowing just because of that initial timing of when we get cash receipts. So that's why we have two options to school districts. First is you can go to what's known as a tax revenue anticipation note. And about a year ago, we had shared that with the board, kind of those funding options. We would typically go down this course. It's a short-term financing. It's for a year. It goes through the normal, it's almost similar like a bond. We are not at this point, we're not able to do that, given a pending inquiry with the Securities and Exchange Commission, and then also with the AB one thirty-nine report. So those are key factors that go into that official statement that disclosed. So that's why we're precluded from going to the financing market. So in the meantime, through the county treasurer's office, through Dan McAllister and his team, and then via the county office of education, what we did in nineteen twenty and what we're planning to do in 2021, because we can't go to the financial market, is to get a treasurer's loan. We'll be bringing forward that resolution to the board at the next board meeting. That is in essence getting an advancement on our property taxes. We're eligible for about seventy-seven million, and you'll see that here on this next slide. In our cash flow planning, here's where you can see we were already going to need, outside of any of these other deferrals. We were going to need thirty million in July and August, because those are, like I said, the least amount of monies that we receive from the state. And then periodically, then the county will repay themselves back through those supplementals that come in. And then we were going to take the balance in October, and then have this paid off in April, just like we did in this current year that we're in. We're planning on going that route, and we are still going to do that piece of it. But in addition to that, what you see on this slide is this month, because we can't go back to the county treasurer, you can only do that through April because of the property taxes. So now we're kind of on our own. We have to look at our different funding sources or cash accounts. So we're having to cover that thirty-three million dollars of what I said earlier. Right now, we anticipate we'll have a little bit in the general fund, about ten million, but we're still going to need to go get twenty-three million dollars, and we're having to go get a little bit from each one of these funds. Again, it's not by choice. It's not ideal. But we're going to have to temporarily pull, again, what's allowed, that seventy-five percent out of these funds. Now again, this is a fine balance because we have to keep in mind if there are any projects going on, things like that, that we have to align. And we do closely work with the facilities team on this. We're going to have to go to these funds, including Fund Forty-nine. We had just paid that off, but at this point, it looks like we may have to go there this month. And again, this was something I brought up to the county office last week because the guidance and the conversation over the last almost two years, and what is factored into the AB one thirty-nine report is about the borrowing, particularly the Fund Forty-nine. And so I asked the question, you know, where are we with that report? Because at this point, it looks like we're going to have to, out of necessity, go to that fund. But again, it would align with the ed code. I mean, at this point, there's nothing that would indicate that we can't go there. Again, it's not ideal. But again, this factor here on this left-hand side, again, it's about timing. We would get the monies in July, end of July, we would pay it right back. So it would be temporary for a month. What you see on the other side here, on the right side, is what I mentioned earlier, those deferrals from the state. If that stays, and I believe these are actually going to be higher as part of the state legislature's compromise, because they're pushing it into the deferrals in order to restore funding. I believe these numbers are going to be higher, but at this point, this is what we know. And so those three months, we're going to have to go to Fund Forty-nine. It's the only funding source that according to the Education Code that we can go temporarily borrow. So as soon as that money comes in in July, we can pay this right back, pay that fifty-five million. The issue is, is this next block here. And this is where we have to be very mindful, and this is kind of, we don't want to repeat what happened in 2017-18. Of that twenty-four million dollar operating structural deficit that I shared earlier, if nothing's done to address that, we have to assume that that's how things work, that would cause the district, in our current cash projections, we would need to go borrow from Fund Forty-nine, the CFD fund, the Melrose fund. We would need to borrow nine million dollars to make our payment obligations on general fund. This part is what we want to avoid. Again, timing of when you get cash, that is okay according to the ed code. You don't want to go to what I call like a sister fund kind of thing when you can't, because this is truly, you've overspent. And again, this falls in those clauses, so if we had this March borrowing, we would have to pay that before the end of the year. So this is what we want to avoid in the near term, if the governor's budget remains as it is. We have to address this cash issue. Have to address the twenty-four million dollars that's in that other item if it stays that way. But then definitely from a cash standpoint. Okay, so I just want to be clear that when you overspend in one area, it doesn't give you authorization. Again, it's not new money. It's not new money. You can't go get it somewhere else. You have to make it whole. And then the next few funds, I just wanted to highlight adult education, because I know this was mentioned by a board member at a prior meeting. What you see here is our adopted budget, where we think, that's column A. Column B is our estimated actions, where we think we're going to end the year, and then what we're planning for next year, column C. What column C reflects here is what's on that call-out. We do, and again, working with the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Fulcher, and with Dr. Burke, the Director. We did factor in, from the feedback we were receiving at the state, we did reduce the revenues by one point seven million. So you can see here where we were at this year, about fifteen point six. That reduction has been factored in here. We've also adjusted some of the pension costs, because that was one of the offsets that the governor had provided. So that helped by about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. One thing that I wanted to note here is, you know, the fund is going to end with a positive fund balance. You can see about four point three million here. There is some offset and some spend down in here, which was still going to project to end the year at two million dollars. And so I just want to note here, what I mentioned earlier. If in fact the state legislature goes back to what was done during the Great Recession, and again, as I understand it, Sweetwater did utilize that in 2011, this might become an option, that this two million dollars could be used to help alleviate the general fund, if it evolves in that direction. So that's why I've noted that that's being considered at the state level. The other thing that I wanted to raise, not only with this fund, but also Fund Thirteen, is unlike the general fund that has the required two percent minimum reserve, there's also a board resolution, it's forty fifty-six, that we bring annually to the board. We'll be bringing that at the next board meeting as part of what's known as one of the accounting standards, GASB fifty-four. What I'd like to propose is that we do something similar to the adult ed, and also Fund Thirteen, when you look at their data here shortly, to have a minimum set aside in their reserves. That way, that creates those parameters. So something for discussion going forward. But again, these are primarily the primary funding source. I think there was questions at one of the last board meetings of where do we get the funding? Primarily comes from the state. There are some federal programs, one is the WEOA, it's the Workability Innovation Opportunity Act. There's also CAL Works, it's a state one, but the bulk comes from the adult program. And again, all of the different factors in here. The next slide is our Fund Thirteen. And this too, I want to commend the team, all of their work, because since COVID, I think we've now hit our millionth meal that we've provided to students in the community. And so with that, you'll see how those claims have helped the program and their bottom line. So we're anticipating they'll end the year with a positive ending balance of one point four million dollars. Looking ahead to next year, there's still some slight possible deficit. We're projecting about two hundred and fourteen thousand. We've worked very closely with Dr. Geary and Mr. Span on the revenue side of it, the projections and the expenditure side of it. So again, our goal is to ensure that that wouldn't be necessary as we progress throughout the year. So we'll continue to monitor that. But for now, that shortfall will go against that fund balance that we're anticipating having at the end of June. And that, going into the next slide, is kind of where the source of that fund balance. How did that get derived? Because of those, you know, meals that have been served over the course of the last few months, you can see the significant change. So a year ago in April, this is what we traditionally would claim for our students. You can see that the claim was nearly almost double, because again, of the level of meals that were served. So that excess of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand revenues can help go to the bottom line, to the fund balance. May, May just wasn't kind of almost like a break-even month because of, you know, that was a high claim that we normally get for our students in May. And then what was claimed for the community meals. So there's just a difference of a hundred and fifty-one. And then you can see the month of June. So the month of June, we're at a hundred and ninety-four thousand a year ago, because we only serve typically those first few days of the school year. But this year, I believe, we're projecting perhaps five sites where we'll be able to serve those meals through the end of this month. So again, all in all, that accumulated, and again, we helped serve the community. And it did with all, these were all part of those federal waivers that were granted by the USDA and the federal government to allow us to maximize that and help the community. The next few slides are our capital funds. So typically, our Fund Fourteen, as you can see, is very minimal there. Typically, that's funded when you set aside monies from the general fund, that as I shared on the prior slide, is not excess for us to commit to this fund. So we've got a very minimal balance. The next one's the bond fund, Fund Twenty-one, kind of where we're projecting to end, and then what projects are committed for next year. And so this is pretty consistent all the way through for the next few slides, including Fund Forty-nine. So in terms of next steps, these slides here, again, this is as we were putting this together, there's still a lot of movement, a lot of activity. You know, the Senate, the Assembly was having meetings on May eighteenth. These areas here were their primary focus, that learning loss, categorical funding and flexibility, which kind of, I mentioned earlier, that flexibility. They reconvened again on May twenty-ninth. And then the legislature, who has been very vocal, or sorry, the Senate, I should say. The Senate has been very vocal pushing back on the governor's proposal of the reduction in overall funding. So they're in essence saying to restore that funding. However, what it looks like, most of it will be in cash deferrals. So that's what you see here. So they're relying on federal program, another, you know, stimulus package. There's some trigger language, the way that they've written their counterproposal to the governor about that. But again, a lot is still moving. What we call the big three, the Assembly, the Senate, and the governor will be convening this week to come up with an overall compromise. Because that'll need to be done by June fifteenth, and then the governor has until June thirtieth. So we're going to be in that state, and again, it's not unusual, like we were in last year, and again, how it'll always be in terms of going forward. We're always in the unique period where we have to bring forward a budget, where there's still things that are not complete at the state level. The other key factor, which I've been hearing quite a bit about, is more than likely, the state will have a revised budget come August. Again, very unusual, but because of that largest revenue stream of the income taxes coming in July, the state will be reevaluating that along with the governor. And could that shift things for school districts as well? But that's going to be a very, again, another unknown. There's some uncertainty with that. But what that will look like, depending on how the economy recovers and what those projections reflect. The last piece, aside now from the budget, what I wanted to highlight is on the board agenda item, is a draft budget book for 2021. I know it's been many years since that's come forward to the board. And so what we did amidst of all of our other deliverables too, we wanted to provide a document in alignment with LCAP Goal Four, about transparency. Please note that this is still, there's watermarks on all of those documents. It's a draft. There were things we weren't able to get to in terms of timing. You know, little details such as page numbers, we want to put that on there. But also, you know, we want to put projected enrollment numbers. It's a good reference point. So our goal is to get that done by the twenty-second. But the key three areas, what you see here, and this is a roll-up of all of the funding sources at each of our schools and part of our departments and so forth. You look, there's certificated staffing that aligns to what is in, what's considered our in ratio for the contract, for our subject matter areas. We have other teacher allocations that are accounted for. All of that rolls up to what you see on the left-hand column. The middle column is our classified staff. And one thing I wanted to note, you see the little asterisks about the full-time equivalent, an FTE. Classified are calculated, a little different than the certificated. And this is how it works with our True Course Accounting System and our PeopleSoft Accounting System, how we pay folks. Classified, it's all based on the hours per day, their work year, and then there's a divisor of two thousand and eighty hours. So that's where you see as an example, that first line item here, this ASV tag, that's point eight-six. So there, an example, you take eight hours a day, then on a two hundred and twenty-four work year calendar, multiply that, then divide it by two thousand and eighty. That's where we get the point eight-six. So I just wanted to note that because it's a little bit unique when you compare certificated and classified. And then the other part here is just the proposed budget at the school site, you know, high-level roll-up. Again, the goal is to have these, again, it's going to be a work in progress. We hope to grow this more so into twenty-one, twenty-two. But this was, you know, I guess I compressed with a lot of other things. We at least wanted to have this out there for that sake of transparency. But we're going to do some more quality check, make sure that things look good and final for the twenty-second. And what we envision is working with our Grants and Communications Department to add even like little profiles on each of the schools, and then have this link up to each school's webpage. So again, this has been a lot of work too, that staff has done, and moved into the weekend on this one, right before the deadline. So in terms of next steps, again, as I mentioned earlier, the LCAP that will not be brought forward until December. There is a COVID-related written report that is going to be coming forward to the board on the twenty-second. But that's very focused on a subset of criteria that was provided by a template by the state that is required to go with the budget. So we're having our public hearing today, and then we'll bring forward the budget adoption on the twenty-second, along with a separate resolution item for that county borrowing. And that's it. So I know that was a lot of information, but I think it provides that context of where we're at in terms of our budget thing.
Thank you, Dr. Saukel, for that very comprehensive and in-depth report. We'll hold questions until after we have the public hearing and hear a public comment, okay? So at this point in time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, I have one speaker.
Okay.
I have comments from Stephanie Hubner. Dr. Gianni and board members, in the presentation of the budget, was it made clear the cost of the San Diego County Office of Education Librarian of Record per pupil charge and the charge for transferring library management systems to Destiny? Those line items should be somewhere around half a million dollars. I just want to make sure that there is transparency to the public and board that the district is required by ed code one eight one zero zero and one eight one two zero to provide library services to students and teachers. But if it fails to do so by employing current district employees, by August thirtieth, a librarian of record must be in place, and the above-mentioned costs will ensue. There are no further comments on this item.
Okay, if there are no further comments, then I will close the public hearing. And I don't know, any board members have any questions or comments that they'd like to share? Okay, seeing none, then, yes.
Sorry, I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I failed to look at the right-hand side. I'm sorry, Mr. Solis. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Saukel, for the thorough presentation. Uh, uh, thank you, Dr. Salkeld, for the thorough, um, presentation. Uh, with regards to, uh, I think it was Slide 48 and, uh, Fund 49, uh, you had, you had mentioned that, uh, you, you spoke to the county, uh, with regards to, to borrowing from, uh, Fund 49. Uh, I know it's been contentious enough, but I'm just curious, what, what was their response to, to us, uh, going to Fund 49?
You're muted, Dr. Salkeld.
Sorry about that. So what I'd indicated at that point in time, because of what you see here on the left, they have to approve. We submit, so this like three million dollars here at the end, if we do need to go get three million, we process what's known as an auditor transfer. It goes through our approvals in-house, but then it goes to the county office of ED. They have to approve it, right? They re, they release the funds so that the county treasurer can move the dollars. And so when I highlighted that piece, and I said, yeah, we need the guidance, where are we? Um, what was shared with us was, with Dr. Janney and I, and our Director of Fiscal Services, was, well, our concern is that can you pay it back? That's always been our concern. And so I think it was just a little bit different messaging as what we're, where we've been at, is that we can't do it. So we've been very careful to not go to Fund 49. It's not ideal, it's not where, not where we want to go, but, um, it's been a very, um, different approach. And so I just indicated we're anxiously awaiting what's in that AB 139 report particularly, not only because of this three million, but because we have a significant deferral here in the upcoming year. How does that translate? Because when I said, you know, can we be first in line for that cash deferral exemption that the Governor, uh, proposed? And what was shared was, well, the state will say, what funding sources do you have? And, and so again, Fund 49 would be one of those funding sources to cover that temporary shortfall. So I thought, again, we weren't supposed to go there to Fund 49. But I think we just need a little bit more clarification as this evolves with this deferral. If, if the cash deferral cannot be issued to Sweetwater because we have monies sitting in Fund 49.
I'm with you. It's fixed, Doc.
Put off that, answer your question, but I think we need more clarification, but that, that's going to be forthcoming, like rather soon with this three million.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. And, and also, uh, I guess, uh, with, uh, regarding that, uh, the question that we got about library services and library of record, what, can, can we get some clarification on that? It's kind of interesting.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware if that's maybe Dr. Janney, Dr. Al, or some, yeah.
We will look into that. I didn't quite get the ED code number, but I'll get it from, uh, Ms. Vethedo. We'll follow up on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Great work.
I, I have a question to Dr. Scavarna. Um, how, how will you be able to advocate for us, Dr. Scavarna, in, in all of these moving parts? Is, is that something that's within your purview to do, to advocate for us with the county office of ED? He may have stepped down. Okay.
Can you folks hear me?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Thank you.
There we go, it's just a little slow. Uh, I do, I do advocate for the district. I actually believe that there are so many moving targets with what we're dealing with, with the budget in the next few years, that much the same when the great recession occurred that, that we all lived through, uh, it gave us a lot more flexibility and it wasn't as bad as it could have been without that flexibility. I actually believe that they're real close in the next few days, uh, to coming up with some good sensible solutions at the state level, um, and tend to, tend to look at it in a very positive way. I understand what Dr. Salkeld's saying about being draconian, and I, I had to smile when I heard that, and I understand that completely. But, but, um, in, in a situation like this, in a state the size of ours, with so many school districts in, uh, jeopardy, it, it doesn't, uh, it, it doesn't do anything besides, uh, you know, it's always, it will be in its county position to try to help out every district in that county. So, uh, we'll do whatever we can do, and we'll, and we'll try to get the 139 audit as quick as we can and everything else. But I actually believe that, uh, the state and the legislature and the Senate and the Governor are going to come to some conclusion here sooner than later.
Thank you. Thank you for your insights, Dr. Scavarna. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anya, yes, Mr. Segura?
Yes, um, could you go to Slide 20, please? So, um, down to the very bottom, use, use, use proceeds for property sales for one-time general fund purposes. So if the Governor's, um, recommendation stands, then, and the timing works out with our pending sale of this property we, we got, we just did today, is that possible that, um, that we could use that money this year for our, uh, to help with our shortfalls?
Well, this one's actually a unique case because where we're at is, so that property sale that we just, right now, negotiated a little over six million dollars on that, that bid process. Fund 40 has an ongoing obligation for about two million dollars a year, goes up a little bit incrementally, and it's on, it's there until 2035. There's, there's a debt obligation until 2035. That money needs, it goes into, the way the code reads right now, goes into Fund 40, and then we would pay that obligation. If we move that money over to general fund, either way, at some point in time, you still got to make sure you make that payment to fund. If you use it all under general fund, then next year we'd have the two million. Next year, then we'd have the two million. Still have that contribution that would have to come from the general fund. I would not recommend shifting this particular sale out of Fund 40, so it continues to make its obligation. What I'd recommend is if we do have any other property available, that we could explore that option, and if this provision remains, could that help be a support to the general fund? A, a property that doesn't have, and where we don't have this shortfall into Fund 40.
I mean, I, I appreciate your recommendation, but I could see where it could make sense, at least using part of it for one year. I mean, and, and, you know, we, we can't just be super conservative. We kind of made your shortfall, and anything we could do to help, I think, needs to be considered. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino. Um, yes, I'd like to first go back to the Adult Ed Fund. I have a comment to make about that. I mean, I understand what happened in 2008 during the great recession, if that's what you want to call that. Um, school districts and the way programs were funded, we, we were really heavy on categorical programs that put a lot of funding into a restricted category. That isn't the case anymore with LCFF, and we've used our, what would be considered back then a restricted, which is basically now supplemental and concentration funding, is really part of what we use every day for every school. The Adult Ed Fund took a huge hit, as you referred to, Dr. Salkeld, back in that timeframe, when Tier Three money and Tier Two were, were the way that the state provided some flexibility. The Adult Ed Fund took a huge hit they've never recovered from. They still serve some of our most needy population for the adult education. And as we all know, at this time with COVID and the loss of jobs across our county, across our state, a lot of people will be returning to school in order to train for something else. That is going to be where they go. A lot of our community members will turn to adult education for that. And if we take all the money away from them that we, if we utilize that fund, we're going to strip it even more from being able to serve those people and get them back to work. So I would caution about planning any of that. And I would definitely say, if you, I do have a question coming out of this too, is, um, could you explain why you have a four million dollar? I think it's, could you explain a little bit about the cash flow and why you would have such a large, uh, ending balance in the fund at year end? Is it because of the, when you get paid the funds that, and how they go with your cash flow, or how does that work?
Because that, um, they're separated apart. So this one's looking, we do look at those ED quotes, and then there is a cash flow statement that we monitor. But it's the timing of when, there are a lot of things that we were looking at this year on the, on the staffing side of things that got implemented second semester, that's helping contribute to the bottom line. Um, us monitoring, there's some expenditures, some supplies and things that, uh, we're working with Dr. Burke on. A lot of it's timing, so if you don't spend it in this year, he's got the plan to spend it into next year. Um, so we've been closely monitoring that activity.
Okay. So the plan is for them to be able to utilize their funds for the adult ed program, correct? Not just hold off and you can't spend it? I mean, I know we all have obligations. We're looking forward at a growing, you know, everybody's costs are growing, especially because of stirs and purrs. So that's without even having COVID or any of the other, um, hits to our program and to our funding, to our, you know, allocations. We know that those costs alone and the way they're rising is, is reducing our ability to really have positive, you know, future going forward with our budgets, looking at our budgets without having to cut something. But at the same time, I want to know that we're actually letting the people have the program they, they're funded for, um, during the year they're there, so that they can move forward in their life. So I think that's really key. So are they able to utilize the money that was planned in their budget, or has there been a lot of heavy spending freeze going on for that refund?
Let me out and mention one key thing that's unique to the adult ed. This is now year two, and we're kind of planning that into year three. That's where we've been working very closely with Dr. Foltre and Dr. Burke on that cash flow. Now, this is where you take this operational piece, so let, let's look at column B, row four for state, so that fifteen point six million as an example. If that came in consistently throughout the year, the way that this adult ed program works is that payment that is due in July and August typically is paid in September. Then you get the monthly apportionment, and it's pretty static. What's happened the last two years is the dis, the district, the adult ed program did not see cash at all until January. So seven million dollars did not come in during that timeframe. So that's where we had to work with Dr. Burke and the program and, and Dr. Foltre, saying, okay, look, this money's not coming in. If you spend what you intended on supplies, or you spend you intended, then what's happening is they're having to borrow from general fund to make their obligations because they didn't have the money in the bank, right? We had to make sure we had enough for payroll, we had all that other pieces. So that's why we managed the supply piece of it closely those six to seven months until that money came in in January, February.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's really what I was getting to in some ways, because I know in the monthly cash flow report, you, uh, have been preparing for us, which is great. I can see that, especially in the adult ed fund, the big, you know, the bars where it shows your expenditures and your revenues, they're two different colors. You can just, I mean, all you have to do is look at that one page and you can see the real issue there. But I think it's important for everyone, that especially our adult ed staff and, and the students, they understand in some, even if it's in a little minor way, that it's not all about withholding money, it's about how to run the program as best you can with the, with the resources, managing the resources appropriately, and that it isn't holding back on things that they will need. But the spending plan is implemented in a real, um, mindful way in order to ensure the program is run well. So I appreciate your explanation. And I, I, my next comment is about the budget book. I just want to say thank you and thanks to your staff for developing that. I know I, I brought budget books to, um, the district to show them one they had had themselves. I had a copy of one that was done back in like the 2007 or '08 from Sweetwater School District. It was a budget book. And I, and I had a Board member from another district up in, uh, Vista, he had provided me one as an example of how they did theirs. I know at my own, in my own work, we have had them over the years. And I feel it's a really good true, tool to have transparency and accountability because it's laid out clearly what kind of staffing you're give, giving. And I think it's also important, and I know you're working towards that, this is a big accomplishment for you to have done this year, especially considering it's being done, um, remotely through, you know, remote work. Um, the fact that you've done it is tremendous. I, I give you praise for that. I would like to see, once, one request is that you put in the type of money that is funding that school or that department. So not just a FTE, but event, I would like to see the dollars and what the color of that money is. And really just, that will even add more enhancement. So when people ask, well, where is all this money? You can go to that page, point to that item and say, there it is. That's what we spent it on, or that's what we've allocated to, and everything's there. And I think that will be like the biggest, um, the easiest tool for our staff and our public and our community are to understand and to utilize throughout the year. So thank you for doing that. It's a tremendous job, I know. Um, and I just want to say thank you for the work you're doing. My last question is, currently, as you, you mentioned, the Senate and the Assembly have come together and, and they've actually proposed something quite different from what the Governor did in his May revise. What is your plan? Because we expect to see that budget sometime next week, by the 15th. They have to come to an agreement and pass a budget by the 15th of June, is that correct?
Right. They have until the 15th, and then the Governor has typically 14 days or till then, uh, after they approve it. So, um, he has to, then, do that.
So when they come together and they, and the Governor and the legislature comes together and they say, okay, here's the package we will go forward with, and we believe that it will be sooner than later in the month because of the impact to everyone in the state right now. What is your plan to react to that? If it comes out with a better picture than what, what you're, you're having to show us at this point in time, based on the Governor's revise, which is very dire? Is there any plan to change anything in your bu, in your budget here?
That'll be coming from guidance from the county office. And one key thing that we all rely on, because again, we can't manipulate that sick mat calculator, we're going to need to have that turned around. I mean, we can in essence, try and restore and, and post an entry to offset, let's say it is the forty million dollar impact, um, but it's going to need to be guidance from the county, what they anticipate for us to submit. Because the timing, as you just highlighted, is going to be critical, right? So by the time we get any indication by the 15th, we're already having to come up against four deadlines and, and the timing and, and getting everything ready for the agenda, um, we may not have that updated calculator in time to make those entries. So I think over the next week, we need to get some guidance from, from various parties at the state level, the county, um, as to what that'll look like. Uh, because typically budgets, and when you're making assumptions, they're based on the Governor's final action. And so, yeah, things are different at the, at the legislature, but it's usually that Board final action. And then typically, that's why when we come back in the 45-day, that's the other consideration. You bring back any significant changes, um, by August 15th. And we've been doing that last few years. So we would bring that if that's the case, and maybe that's where the guidance is going to come in, is we wait till August 15th to bring that revision. Um, because then again, there's going to be a state update at that timeframe as well. The next few weeks and the next two months to three months are going to be key. There's going to be a lot of movement. There's gonna be a lot of movement.
Right, and thank you. And I understand that. My, my whole point is we've cut ourselves already quite extensively with the number of positions we've right, the number of notices that have been sent out, the number of people that are being reffed. Um along with other extensive budgets, some of which you went through on your slide about uh the assumptions you made for the fall semester. What we know is that there is gonna be an increased need to have so many things. We'll need more staff if we were enabled to go back into a hard, you know, a building real in-person learning, which many of our students are really need in order to thrive and to continue their pathway. Um we'll need extra staff, we'll need extra custodians to clean up things, we'll need more space or staggered learning, which some of this, all these things have to be considered. Um so I just wanted to know if there was any plan. And it doesn't sound like you're, it sounds like you're just gonna stand hard on the governor's May revise and leave it at that.
And that's the guidance what we're getting from the county for now.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Uh if, if there are no further comments, thank you again, Dr. Sakal. Please uh thank your team for us, uh excellent work. And I would like to also echo uh Mrs. Hall's uh praise of the uh draft budget book that was included. I think that uh, that, that really does help uh us uh look at what's going on site by site. And uh, and I think the uh, the additions that you plan on making um, you know, throughout this process are, are good ones. And so again, thank you very much. Um I've been told that we have forty-two requests to speak uh on non-public agenda items. So uh I would uh recommend that we take a fifty.
Not that many, sir.
Oh, not that many, how many?
Twenty-six. Um twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Non-agenda, yes.
Okay, so uh I would recommend, I would recommend that we take a fifteen minute break before we get into uh those comments and move on with the agenda. So it is now about ten minutes to nine, so we will reconvene at uh five after nine, okay?
Okay.
Okay, at this point, we will reconvene the meeting, uh Madam Clerk, do you wanna call the roll again?
We don't normally do that when you reconvene from a break.
Okay, all right. Um just seeing if you were, I was seeing if you were on your toes.
Oh, thank you.
Uh this is, this is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the board on any matter not on the agenda, and they have three minutes each to do so. The Board of Trustees cannot legally take action on or respond to matters not posted on the public agenda, but will refer the matter to the Superintendent's Office for review and report. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker?
The first comments are from Anthony Devine. They're actually from three people: Anthony Devine, Suzanne Stanlock, an open letter to the Sweetwater Union High School District.
Wait, before you, before you, before you do, I hear roughly the papers. Can everyone please mute?
An open letter to the Sweetwater Union High School District Board. We are a group of high school teacher librarians from the Grossmont Union School District, writing personally to urge you to reconsider plans to eliminate your district's credentialed librarians. We assert that doing so would educationally disadvantage Sweetwater students, whom we care about as part of our shared San Diego County community. School libraries run by certified teacher librarians prepare students for college, career, and life by opening doors of opportunity today. The benefits of having access to school libraries and certified librarians have been documented in multiple studies we would be happy to share. But rather than listing those findings, we speak from our firsthand experiences to highlight some critical contributions teacher librarians make toward whole-school success that some people may not be aware are essential features of current school library program best practices. Teacher librarians are the one teacher on a school campus that serves every single student throughout their high school or middle school career. Teacher librarians are a built-in professional development resource for all teachers on campus. Teacher librarians are literacy leaders. Teacher librarians develop curriculum resources and provide instruction related to digital and information literacy inquiry and research. Teacher librarians provide cost savings through facilitating expertly curated resource sharing. Teacher librarians provide a safe space on campus that supports social-emotional learning. At a time when your district is facing the difficult challenge of making some very heartbreaking decisions related to staffing cuts, we ask you to consider how, rather than seeing this as a time to eliminate teacher librarians. It is really when you should be leaning on them all the more. If your current teacher librarians are already providing the services listed above, it should be a matter of ensuring they are able to continue this valuable work. And if there are certain individuals who are not, then it is time to make sure they are encouraged and empowered to serve in this capacity, since teachers' and students' needs will likely be even greater than before. Your students deserve quality school library programs. You have students who depend on them. The next comments are from Antonio Avalas Viles. The library has been an essential component of our school, especially when it came to studying, assisting us, and inspiring us to be better students, better people. Not only has a librarian been quick, efficient, and cordial with any issues students may have, but the library has always been well-maintained at all times, therefore making this a very positive environment whenever I decide to study, check out any books I need, or have any academic league matches. One of the major ways in which our librarian has helped not only me, but my whole IB program, is how she guided us on how to complete certain components of the extended essay, such as what to concentrate on when completing our reflections and on what sources to rely on when conducting research for such a major assignment that we must complete mostly by ourselves for the IB program. If it was not for her easy-to-digest-yet-efficient guidance, we would all be lost and struggling with our extended essays. Furthermore, she has put a lot of dedication into assisting us during our extended essay process by ensuring that we are keeping up with important deadlines and making sure that we are putting our best efforts into our work no matter what. In essence, our school just would not be the same without our librarian, since the library just would not feel as welcoming as it has for the past three years I have been in Castle Park. If our school does not have a librarian, and to a further extent does not have a library, then this would majorly impact the education of all students, especially those who are pursuing a higher education experience, such as the IB and AP students, since the resources that are available to us now would not be available to students who are truly dedicated to their education. Therefore, the lack of such valuable and essential resources that our library has offered to all students throughout the years would not only affect the experiences and grades of all students, but it would also impact the way that classes are currently being taught. The next comments are from Blanca Wines. Good evening, Superintendent Karen Janney and Board members. I am a parent of three high school students attending Sweetwater Union High School District. It has been a difficult semester with so much uncertainty of the pandemic, and now our nation is experiencing racial injustice. It is safe to say our youth is experiencing social-emotional stress, lack of motivation, and high anxiety. Students had to adapt to distance learning, which has not been a positive one. My son, who attends a learning center, had the support of his teacher and counselor on a daily basis, motivating him and encouraging him to complete his credits. I'm not surprised that my son received this support during the pandemic for the reason that he's received this support from the learning center since day one. That being said, have you thought about the extra stress, stress, and anxiety you are creating for students attending learning centers? The uncertainty of not knowing where, who will be their support, and how they will receive an education? The answer to this is no. Mr. Foulter has failed to provide answers to our questions. Putting students first is definitely not in your agenda. Here are some of the questions we have. Have you held current forums when our community forums for students and staff go into occur? Where is the transparency of the financial aspects of your plan, and how will it affect the district? Please provide us with detailed information on how independent studies will work. Where is the research and data that supports students will be successful with less direct services? Parents and board members Paula Hall Parents and board members Paula Hall and Nick Segura requested learning centers be added to the open session board meetings, and we have been ignored. Why? June 12, 2017, during a board meeting, a 3.75% increase for management personnel was approved. Karen Janney has doubled district positions in order to improve our district, yet the district is still in disarray. Why haven't administrators' positions been cut? Joe Foulter, Admin of Equity Culture, has 14 district employees working in his department. Some of these positions are administration positions. Why haven't budget cuts been made in this department as well? The district prides itself in being transparent and equitable, yet you aren't either. Here's an example of this. During a Zoom meeting on June 3, only 10 to 13 parents attended this meeting. There are 1,200-plus Learning Center students. The reason only these parents attended the meeting was for the reason that Joe Foulter only sent communication via email in English-only and an infant-in-campus English-only message with an attachment that we could not open. He offered no translation service during this first meeting, and it was a private parent meeting. During the June 5 Zoom meeting, Mr. Foulter deliberately did not allow parents or students to join the meeting, and I had to be interpreted twice to allow parents to join the meeting. He also removed a board member from the meeting and would not allow this board member to join until I requested he allow her to join. Once again, this district promotes transparency and equity and has failed. The next comments are from Caesar Fernandez. It was difficult to watch the bad scripted acting on behalf of some board members, the superintendent, and at least one member of the public in regards to bargaining between the district and SCA. While the district can claim that they stated a mere equivalence of furlough days to teachers, they can never, I repeat, never, say they made an official offer to save any of our members. The district may have winked their eye while they said it, as we've heard they did with other units, but there was never anything on paper. To watch the theater in regards to this matter at a recent board meeting was disheartening, as it comes from an administration that considers SCA to be partners. The board should know that SCA submitted a bargaining proposal that would provide the district with significant structural savings. The response to this proposal was a few clarifying questions, then a caucus, and that was it. I do know that it is prudent for both sides to wait until the state legislature completes their budget process later this month. When we do reconvene for bargaining, I hope the district will come in earnest with a workable counterproposal. Lastly, as SCA and the public watch the budget solutions increase at each interim, we have to ask, when is it too much? At what point are the solutions too big for the district to manage without the help of the state? When we watch these budget presentations, do we clearly see that there was any progress made? Any money saved? When all we see highlighted are excruciating cuts for years to come, we have to ask if we just need more help. Thank you. The next comments are from Cian Gonzalez. Hello, my name is Cian Gonzalez, and I firmly believe that we should not get rid of our librarians. At Castle Park High School, our librarian, Ms. McBride, has done so much for our students. Without a librarian, the library would not be able to function and be there for those who need it. I remember when I transferred to Castle Park High School from another high school, and I did not have any friends. I decided to go to the library during lunch, because I had nowhere else to go. The library eventually became a safe place for me at school, and I met many of the friends I have now in the library. This was only possible because of our librarian, who made the library such a positive place to be in. I am in the IB program, and one of the requirements for the IB diploma is the 4,000-word extended essay. The extended essay would be almost impossible to do without a librarian. Not only did Ms. McBride guide us through the essay, but she also gave us many resources, both online and text, to use. She put in so much time for each IB student, and we can't thank her enough. She consistently helped us by giving us advice, showing us how to use proper format, and so much more. I am thankful we had her to guide us through it, and I could not imagine writing the extended essay without her. As years pass, more and more IB students will begin writing the extended essay. Without a librarian, the future IB students would struggle with their extended essay and submit poor-quality essays. This would result in many future IB students not graduating with the IB diploma because of the low score they received on their extended essay. Ms. McBride also introduced us to the California Young Reader Medal Challenge and even offered a prize for completing it. This motivated many students at our school, including me, to take on this challenge. Because of this challenge, I developed a greater appreciation of books. Many of my friends now read as a hobby after completing this challenge. This is all thanks to, once again, our librarian, who made reading seem like it wasn't a task, but instead a new and fun activity that you can add to your life. I hope you come to your senses and realize that we need our librarians. No student should be tripped, no student should be stripped from the benefits that a librarian has to offer. By removing our librarians, the students suffer academically and are placed at a disadvantage, because other schools have librarians. The librarian should not suffer for a mistake that they did not make. I am sure you understand the unfairness in this situation. Please understand that librarians have done a fantastic job with fulfilling their role as a staff member and are the last people you should be considering to let go. The next comments are from Dee Dice. Dear Board members, thank you for allowing me to present my views. My name is Dee Dice. Our family lives in Imperial Beach. I have reared three children, all of whom attended school in the Sweetwater District. I am speaking on behalf of the Learning Centers Program in the District. I find myself at a loss to find appropriate words to express my thankfulness and gratitude for the staff and teachers at the Marvester Learning Center for the positive impact they and the Learning Center program have had on my grandson's life. He has achieved successes in the Learning Center that he would not be able to have done anywhere else in the public or private school system. Educating students regardless of their home and learning situations, especially those in high school trying to receive their diploma to ensure they have a step up to a brighter future, is of the utmost critical importance. This cannot be stressed enough. The environment and individualized learning for the students in the Learning Centers is not a black-and-white situation. Even if the centers are operating at a dollar loss and the graduation requirements are not always met as expected, this program is crucial if even only one or a handful of students are able to be saved. What is the price of one individual's success? The high school graduates or non-graduates will have key impacts on the education and lives of subsequent generations. Funding the Learning Centers should not be a year-to-year budget determination, as the results and successes of the Learning Center students are exponential. The positive impact Learning Center graduates have on their own future and those of following generations is difficult to measure. However, endless studies have proven time and again young adults earning a high school diploma fare far better than those who do not. What we do know and can predict is those students having the Learning Center support are far less likely to drop out of school and far more likely to discover that they can succeed and earn their diploma. Success breeds success. If the Learning Center program is cut, students will not have effective options to realize their full potential or foster their success. Some may say, oh, this is what the IEP program is for. The IEP program takes a large amount of resources to administer. Despite the desire and good intent of IEP staff, they are often overworked and overburdened with their caseloads, and many students do not receive the IEP resources they need. For failed IEP students and those students not qualifying for IEPs, what is their next step? What is their safeguard? I firmly believe that safeguard is the Learning Centers program. If the Learning Center opportunities and staff are not there for them, who will be there for them? What will happen to those students? Do you, as a board, want to shoulder the responsibility, burden, and guilt of denying those students under your responsibility and purview, their last chance opportunity to achieve their high school diploma? The high school dropout rate will rise with all the negative consequences that accompanies that on your shoulders. We must remember that feeding and educating the mental and emotional self is just as critical, if not more, than feeding and clothing the physical self. There has been much discussion about the future of education and business in our society will look like subsequent to the COVID-19 exposure, experience. Regarding education, I believe the Learning Center students have had the least amount of disruption in their education during COVID-19 due to the way the program operates. The Learning Center program is the perfect example of a distance-learning program. Brief time in class with the majority of education being done at home or online, while having the access to guidance of teachers and resources at the school, in class, and via phone or email. Instead of closing the Learning Centers, I would plead with you to stop and rethink the direction you are taking the Learning Centers program. Not all students learn in the same manner, not all IEPs work. The continued funding of the Learning Centers program will continue to give those students whose learning needs are not being met a curriculum tailored to their learning style that fosters their success. The Learning Centers are already an outstanding example of distance-learning. It would be prudent to use the Learning Center program as an example of how best to incorporate distance-learning into the mainstream curriculum. There's a couple more paragraphs, but I believe she put more than three minutes worth, so you can read the last two when I email them to you. The next comments are from Gabriela Padilla. Good evening, my name is Gabriela Padilla. I am an alumni of Montgomery High School and a district employee for the past 29 years. 18 of those is the librarian at San Ysidro High School. Since many district administrators seem to believe that all we do is supervise students in the library, I wanted to ask you this question. What will happen now that librarians are gone? What will happen when the library doors are closed? Because they will close when there is not a credentialed teacher in there to supervise. Where will the students who need that safe, warm, welcoming space go to? If you think school administrators will be able to physically be in the library every day during lunch in order for the library doors to stay open, think again. They will be called out for other daily issues that arise. Will the library technician then left to be supervised the 100 students in the library? Librarians are everyone's teachers. All students are ours. We make sure to greet them, make them feel welcome. Ask them how they are doing. We are another adult who sees them. There are so many different groups of students who walk into libraries, because we welcome all of them. We give them a place where they feel seen and cared for. They feel safe, welcomed, and supported. So I ask you again, where will our students go? The next comments are from Gina Woodard. Good evening, Dr. Janney and Sweetwater Board members. We cannot hide under the guise of equity and culture when our district is taking steps to disenfranchise our racial and ethnic minority and most at-risk students. By riffing our youngest teachers, we are disproportionately eliminating teaching positions that represent a higher percentage of racially and ethnically diverse individuals. By eliminating our librarians, we are hindering our students from accessing books by racially and ethnically diverse authors whose writings can have a transformative impact on their motivation and engagement in school and in life. By eliminating our Learning Centers, we are denying support to our most at-risk youth, including homeless and foster youth and students with health and emotional challenges, many of whom have established strong rapport with their teachers and need this last-ditch effort to earn high school diplomas and provide future opportunities for them to succeed. By eliminating our instructional assistance, we are denying individualized support to our English-language learners as special education students who have already suffered due to federal cuts to the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. When our school board eliminates programs and certified and classified staff that directly engage in supporting students, they are precipitating an increase in the dropout rate and perpetuating racial and socioeconomic inequalities. Consider the following. High school dropouts are 3.5 times more likely to be arrested and incarcerated. Our state spends seven times more on each prison inmate than it does on the average K-12 student. An increase in the high school dropout rate will incur greater costs to taxpayers and to society. Over the past two decades, the dropout rate has declined by over 6% for Black, Latino, and Native American youth. With cuts to education looming on the horizon, this progress could rapidly unravel. According to a Department of Ed report, only 18% of teachers represent a racial or ethnic minority, yet this number increases to 23% of our youngest teachers in the workforce. Minority students often perform better on standardized tests, have improved attendance, and are suspended less frequently when they have a same-race teacher. In 2018, 26% of the US population living below the poverty line did not have a high school diploma, and 12% have only a high school diploma. By decreasing opportunities for our minority and at-risk students to succeed, we are directing them towards a pathway to poverty and allowing the proliferation of economic disparities. My fear is that future cuts to education My fear is that future cuts to education and the fiscal mismanagement of our district will threaten our most vulnerable students who may not have the support systems at home to succeed academically. It is not enough to merely discuss how we can embed racially and ethnically responsive and representative resources into our curriculum when the district is taking an axe to the very support system that our racial and ethnic minority students and socio-economically disadvantaged students rely upon to help them succeed socially, emotionally and academically. The next comments are from James Love. To President Tarantino, Trustees Superintendent Jenny and this interested public. My name is James Love. I've taught mathematics and English to students in this district for more than twenty years. My comment addresses the issue of librarians in schools. Beyond asking that you reconsider your decision to dismiss librarians, I tell you bluntly that removing librarians is an egregious and crippling mistake. Public comment by some trustees and some district officers makes it clear that key policymakers do not accurately know what school librarians do every day, nor do policymakers appreciate that librarians actually compound positive learning effects in schools. By describing librarians primarily as people who check out books, check in books and maintain inventories, you paint over the most potent capacities of modern school libraries. I am a veteran teacher. To consistently improve the quality of my teaching and my students' experience, I collaborate with my school librarian nearly every day of my work year. Yes, that is every day. I have done so for more than twenty years with each of the five librarians that serve the district sites where I have taught. Why? Because librarians comprise the single most effective, cost-efficient curriculum and professional development resources available to a teacher. I've used their skill to help me diversify curriculum and meet specific cultural and developmental needs of students. Librarians collaborate on faculty professional development. They design lesson study and cross-curricular activities with my department. My librarian regularly observes my lessons, suggests detailed changes of delivery and sequencing that optimize the presentation of different types of information. My librarian can be seen presenting demonstration lessons in any of my high schools' varied departments. My librarian is essential to helping educators and students navigate a forever increasing and overwhelmingly digital information scape. Librarians are curators of information and cultural resources, not just supplies. They train children and their teachers how to organize information and identify relevance and build meaning during tasks of authentic interest. They match resources at specific times to specific needs of specific students and teachers. Librarians are reading development and writing development experts. In fact, my librarians developed, facilitated and supervised the most effective reading development programs I have ever seen in this district. While librarians are adept educators, only four months ago, many of you were unaware they are, in fact, teachers. Please note, they teach every day and are often remarkable. Remove my librarian and you take my most expert, most cost-efficient, most available collaborator and my most immediate source of reliable professional development. The next comments are from Janice Gilmore C. We are in a national emergency. Schools will have vast challenges in reopening. Compare this to other emergencies like a fire or earthquake. Eliminating librarians is like eliminating engineers. Rebuilding must happen. Laborers do the heavy work, but engineers make sure it is done soundly. Bridges don't collapse. Buildings don't slide off their foundations. Your librarians are your engineers. Does anyone else have expertise in library services and systems? Clerical staff, not experts. Administrators, not experts. Other teachers, not experts. You have your experts right now. The ones that can help lead the schools while we are figuring out how to reopen. Textbook collection was a disaster. The written plan developed by district leadership was inadequate and changed capriciously after publication. Librarians were directed by their site administrators to flagrantly ignore district-written guidelines when it served their purposes. Most sites did not scan the returns and have no idea how many are missing. They had students enter campus and place items in stacks, often on the gymnasium floor. Direct contact occurred as administrators collected cash and envelopes without verifying what was owed and also collecting random amounts that don't balance with the library systems. Damaged books will be a major issue. Changes in directions were never communicated in writing and librarians were left in limbo. Librarian questions and concerns were not addressed. Requests for meetings were ignored or scheduled and then canceled with a vague excuse that, quote, "something came up." Extra workers were procured to help, but they stood around saying, quote, "what do I do?" These extra untrained workers actually made the situation worse. More damaged books, more errors and the pile of problems that can only be resolved by the librarian kept growing. The pile is still there, but librarians will not be. And this is just the textbooks. There is so much more that librarians do. Listen to the other librarian speaking to get the full picture. We understand that fewer students meet fewer teachers. We too can do the math. But that does not explain your logic in eliminating librarians. Sweetwater has an average ratio of one librarian to sixteen hundred students. What is the proper ratio? California's library standards say one librarian to seven hundred and eighty-five students. Sweetwater's new ratio will be zero librarians for over thirty-seven thousand students. Zero. Librarians have the expertise that this district needs right now. You cannot afford to lose our services. Whatever the cost of our line item, we're worth it. If you listen to what the librarians do, then you know they are needed now more than ever. Take the librarians off the RIF list and let them get back to work in support of a safe and equitable return to school. The next comments are from Jessica Macias. Plain and simple, schools cannot function properly without librarians. Growing up, I saw the importance of librarians firsthand when my mother took on the position for many years in the Chula Vista Elementary School District. I understood then that a school needs librarians for a reason and they go above and beyond than just checking out books. Watching Sylvia McBride take on this role at Castle Park High School just underscored the importance of the librarian role. It is not an easy job and it simply cannot be done with the proposed plan of having teachers supervise classes while someone who is not certified to run the library alone does the basics. One, that is a waste of class time. Two, the library tech legally cannot complete the functions of a certified librarian. Three, students deserve better than that proposed plan. McBride created such a positive environment in the library that it was full of students before school, during nutrition break, during lunch and after school. She would also make a huge effort to be inclusive by celebrating all holidays that represented the diverse student population, ranging from Asian Pacific American Month to Black History Month to Hispanic Heritage Month. McBride even increased the number of LGBTQ-themed books, books by Hispanic authors and books about women. Whenever we would walk into the library, she was efficiently getting things done, along with the students in mind. As a teacher, she supported us in a variety of ways, by ordering materials in a timely manner, creating a quiet environment for IB and AP exams and coming into our classrooms to present useful information to the students. For instance, McBride came to my IB class to provide information about researching. She gave an in-depth and interactive presentation that allowed students to successfully work on their extended essays, an IB requirement. Losing our librarians will put a wrench in the way things have been running smoothly all these years. Castle Park High School needs Sylvia McBride as a librarian, just like other schools in this district need their librarians. The next comments are from Kathleen Cheers. These are the words of a privileged white woman who acknowledges the continuous struggle of all peoples of color and are not intended to be received as me speaking from or from, speaking for or from the Black perspective. Dr. Jenny, thank you for your June second district website letter. And while I applaud tonight's H three agenda item, respectfully, I am disappointed that our entire board, cabinet, entire union leadership collectively failed to include a detailed heartfelt statement signed by all on tonight's agenda, including our student rep on the Black Lives Matter issue. Waiting till month's end, sadly too late. It is time now for you trustees to speak out as loudly for our Black students, teachers, personnel as you did for our valuable LGBTQ and Latinx students who continuously face discrimination. At the time, you acknowledged the disparity they faced as well as the threat, as an example, the threat of ICE. It is imperative that you acknowledge who they are, Black students. Acknowledge them as members of the Sweetwater family, valuable and worthy. Respect them as you did when you proudly spoke the names LGBTQ and Latinx. Say their name, acknowledge their culture, Black. Correspondence to every student's family is in order. A narrative detailing your emphasis on equity by way of your actions and implementing an equity culture department must be communicated by naming Black students and detailing the department's efforts and actions for all students, including our LGBTQ and the Latinx student community. This brings me to another issue I see, I view as problematic. How Dr. Foulter and his department are received. Dr. Foulter is an intelligent, compassionate man with excellent leadership qualities. He took the baton you so valiantly assigned to him in ensuring all students would be protected from discriminatory behavior. I have watched and listened to angst regarding the department he heads. I am now challenging you to dig deep. Is it the department some listening take exception to, or is it the man and what he represents? The work of those in his department should be acknowledged. One simply needs to turn on the TV to see how much better our world would be if we all had an equity culture mantra. While Sweetwater has more work to do, Dr. Jenny, trustees, take pride in the fact you chose to address this issue five years before it became a news story. This leads me to one, students. The numbers clearly show our Black male students face disciplinary action many more times than others. Black students too have lower scores, an indicator more work is necessary. Two, employees. How often are Black employees referred to as aggressive, hard to work with, while other, non-Blacks are heralded as smart or of leadership quality? Are more Black employees needed? Yes. Students must be able to see themselves in those who mentor them. While all lives matter, including police lives, for far too long, Black lives have not. The next comments are from Kim Ritchie. I hope that the board will rescind the RIF notices for librarians. Without a credentialed teacher librarian, our Sweetwater High School will not be able to serve our students. Our librarian Barbara Chappelle Brown does so much for our students. Training them in research, digital citizenship, providing them with library books, digital books, book clubs and a library webpage. She brings in speakers to encourage the students, authors and informational speakers. Without Barbara Chappelle Brown as our librarian and a technician in her place, our library will not be organized or available to the students that need it. Many of our students use the library before, during lunch and after school to complete assignments since they do not have a place to study at home. Since a credentialed person needs to be there during these times, how or where will they work on their studies? Please reconsider. The next comments are from Kimberly Asparza. Dear Board members, I am writing this in response to Dr. Glover expressing his opinion that the elementary districts in our area function successfully without certificated school librarians. The research and statistics do not support this. Due to the literacy rates of our feeder schools and their lack of library resources, we are perpetuating a systemic problem by closing libraries and limiting access. In the Chula Vista Elementary District, fifteen out of forty-one schools, or twenty-seven percent, are below standard in English Language Arts. Out of those fifteen schools, twelve schools are west of the eight oh five. One is in Benita and the other two are south of Naples Street, very close to the eight oh five. I point this out to show the divide in that district. In National School District, the entire district rates twenty point six points below standard in ELA. Nine out of the ten schools, or ninety percent, are below standard in ELA. In San Ysidro School District, three of their five schools are on the lowest performing schools list in the state of California. As a district, they are twenty-eight point six points below standard in ELA. All five schools, one hundred percent, are below standard in ELA. In South Bay Union School District, the district rates fifty-three point one points below standard in ELA. Nine out of nine schools, one hundred percent, are below standard in ELA. A few years ago, Dr. Stephen Craschen was invited to speak at a Sweetwater PD Day because of his expertise in literacy and second language acquisition. Dr. Craschen has argued that investing in libraries offers a place to literacy for economically disadvantaged children. Craschen writes, "Poor children have very few books at home, live in neighborhoods with few bookstores and public libraries and attend schools with inferior classroom and school libraries." The major source of books for children of poverty is libraries. In fact, libraries are their only chance. One of his own studies showed that the school library had a strong positive effect which balanced the poverty's negative impact. This makes sense. A major reason that poor children have low reading test scores is because they have little access to books. When we supply access in the form of libraries, they read about, they read about as well as children from more affluent families. In a letter written to Sweetwater in February of this year, he states, "I wonder if the district is aware of the consistent research showing that the presence of a teacher librarian is consistently related to higher literacy achievement." Researchers Lance and Kate Scholl recently concluded that "The most substantial and consistent finding is a positive relationship between full-time qualified school librarians and scores on standards-based language arts, reading and writing tests, regardless of student demographics and school characteristics." Lance and Kate Scholl also reported, "The benefits associated with good library programs are strongest for the most vulnerable and at-risk learners, including students of color, low-income students and students with disabilities." Craschen suggested the district do some research. Did you? Data should be backing up important decisions being made, not opinions. The next comments are from Chris Elam. Good evening, Board members. First, I want to thank Mr. Segura and Ms. Hall for being at the District Forum on Race. I found it to be a powerful opportunity to hear from our colleagues who are African-American. I hope our district can finally step up and address the inequities that have been present for my twenty-plus years in Sweetwater in a way that is strong and focused. How we spend our time is the clearest way to show what we value. I can even begin to count the number of hours I've sat in meetings over the last year discussing learning platforms. If I had to, it would be well over fifty. Do you know how many hours I've sat in meetings discussing racism and equity in our district? I can count it on one hand and still have several fingers left. We need to quit using the hashtag "all of this together" when your actions say otherwise. Earlier this year, I spoke to you about the role of SROs on our campuses. I believe this is a critical time to revisit the issue, especially as we are seeing major districts like Minneapolis who have made the move to end those contracts. We are a district that claims to believe in restorative practices. We are also a district with major financial problems. And finally, we are a district that is almost entirely populated by students of color. Any one of those three would be a sufficient reason to remove police from our campuses. Combine all three and it's hard to make an argument not to remove them. So again, I am asking you to take action and make a clear decision to discontinue with SRO contracts for next school year. Finally, we need to continue to revisit equity issues that have surfaced during distance learning. While being part of the various committees to try to make the shift, lip service has been frequently given the idea of hold harmless and finding ways to make it work for all students. Here is a specific example of how this hasn't happened. While students weren't penalized in their regular classes if they weren't able to complete work, this wasn't the case for those in credit recovery. I have students who were in situations where they weren't able to complete work and thus weren't able to finish their credit recovery work, which has led them to not graduating on time. Now those same students are reaching out to me, telling me that summer school is full, so they can't even make up the courses that way. How is this holding our students harmless? You didn't provide seniors with what they needed all school year. Now they still aren't able to finish work over the summer because you are not offering enough courses for them. It's not as if you don't have any teachers available to teach it. I know many teachers who are RIF'd, who are desperate for a job, yet they weren't selected. The next comments are from Lupe Armenta Romero. To the members of the Board, educators and student advocates. I'm a parent of a student who has been enrolled in the Learning Center Program since junior year. The Learning Center was a safe, supportive and inviting place for him to continue his education when it was no longer possible for him to succeed in the mainstream program. He suffers with anxiety and ADD and it had gotten to the point where his regular ed schedule was unmanageable for him. Hoping was very difficult. Earlier in his high school career, we tried to get assistance for him through special education, but he didn't qualify to receive any additional educational services. Because of his differences, many times he became a target for bullying, unfortunately. As you can imagine, it broke my heart to know he had suffered these injustices. Fortunately, there were personnel at the school that made a difference in helping him deal with these situations and helping him sort through these events. One person who helped him immensely was Jennifer Hines. She really made a positive impact on him. I'm grateful that the Learning Center was there for him too. When he was at the Learning Center, he felt that he was still a part of B V H. There was a sense of belonging and acceptance. The social aspect was present too. The teachers in the center had the time and skill to help him succeed. Now there has been a decision to continue alternative education without the Learning Center and continuing on with independent study only. This is not enough to support these students. They need to continue building social skills, not be isolated in their learning. The students' parents are still taxpaying individuals who expect and have a right to an equal education for their children. There are so many students that can benefit from the Learning Center, who struggle with keeping on an educational path full of hurdles they who struggle with keeping on an educational path full of hurdles they cannot clear. Many of them don't qualify for special services, and the Learning Center is an intervention that helps these students succeed and provide access to a high school diploma. Educator, please reconsider closing the Learning Center and advocating for these students who need the extra support. I think it's a bad decision, and the right thing for you to do is keep the Learning Center open, plain and simple. The staff at the Learning Center also deserves to stay on as part of a supportive environment. Support all students. How can you justify cutting here when a real solution exists? Your decision is to cut off the legs of our kids and sacrifice their future by failing to find a solution that's in the best interest of our students. How is this fair to our kids? Thank you for listening. I can only hope that you will resend your decision to close the Learning Center. The next comments are from Marie Nakashima. Greetings. I cannot begin to tell you how much our librarian Barbara Chappelle Brown means to the daily operations of our school, Sweetwater High School. No one works harder to make sure all students stay connected to learning and all the different options open to them. She has a fundamental outreach to our large student population. It makes me very sad to think that you place no value in this. Librarians are essential at Sweetwater, and if you eradicate them, you are denying students their right to a complete education. Please vote to retain librarians like Ms. Barbara. The next comments are from Monique Sorano. Librarians are and always have been a crucial part of a school's community. The library is a place that is helpful in many different tasks. From checking out your textbooks to having a quiet space to relax and feel comfortable when school gets stressful. Librarians are skilled in providing aid to each student that walks in the door and can get them what they need efficiently during break times. Sylvia McBride is the hard-working and eager librarian on Castle Park's campus. She has fulfilled every task as a librarian and has gone above and beyond to incorporate the library into Trojan culture. Her and the staff beside her work nonstop in order to provide resources for students in order to encourage them along their education journey. Tutoring, tech help, textbooks, personal reading recommendations, fines, and more are all at the students' disposal. I could not tell you all the times I have used the library for help or just to go hang out. Students were always encouraged to further their reading by participating in the California Young Reader Challenge, which we all were introduced to a variety of texts to read, discuss, and then celebrate with a party after. I myself have participated and thoroughly enjoyed it. Ms. McBride was always very engaged and enthusiastic about this event and made sure to let every student know about it. This positive reinforcement of reading has integrated itself into the Trojan culture. McBride continued to show her dedication to making the library feel like a second home by decorating on various holidays such as Day of the Dead and using the students' very own art projects to display. This warmth can be felt by each student who walks through the doors and encourages them to spend more time in the library and maybe pick up a new book along the way. As an IB student, I could not be more grateful for Ms. McBride for helping my peers and I in our process of writing our extended essay. Her knowledge of how to properly research is astounding, and she was quick to give us many useful websites and search engines to use in our research. This amount of knowledge and support from her made my time writing my essay extremely easier, and I can't thank her enough for teaching us these skills that are not only useful now, but as well as when we go off to college. Five hundred words isn't enough to describe the hard work and dedication that not only our librarian Ms. McBride has, but every librarian has. You can see the passion she has for her job and her desire to continue to improve for the sake of the students. Without librarians, could our campus even function? Would students be given the resources and help that their teachers couldn't? There are just some things that can't get done unless a librarian is present. While libraries must be quiet, librarians and their students will not. The next comments are from Morgan Clark. I am a fourth-year teacher in the district. In those four years, I have come to notice the drastic variation in site administrators' treatment of black students. I have heard stories about administrators not allowing the fist symbol on BSU materials because it was deemed as too aggressive, despite the fact that it was used on official district materials for Black History Month. As we know, black people are often stereotyped as being more aggressive than non-black students. So I was shocked to hear that the administrator in question was not educated as to that fact. At our beginning-of-the-year meeting for nineteen-twenty, we learned that African-American students are more likely to be suspended than other demographics on our campus, and I suspect that we are not the only site for which this is true. Despite acknowledging that this was true, I did not see any evidence of our site or the district working to correct this inequity. How are administrators being trained in actual restorative justice techniques? Because all I see is punitive discipline that funnels black and brown students into the school-to-prison pipeline. On that note, the Minneapolis School District terminated their contract with the Minneapolis Police Department this week. Sweetwater needs to terminate their contract with the Chula Vista Police Department. Police presence on school campuses leads to punitive actions against black and brown students that contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline. Police presence makes our students feel less safe and welcome. It leads to overpolicing and ruins students' lives before they can even begin while providing zero benefit for our campus. Research has shown that police presence on school campuses does not make them safer. In fact, it has been linked to worse student outcomes. Sweetwater needs to reject police presence in schools so that educational funds can instead be used for more psychologists, counselors, and social workers. The next comments are from Nicole Kranzberg. My apology, oh, let's see, doesn't start there. She was apologizing to me. I would like to speak of the need for a librarian at Sweetwater High School and the incredible work Ms. Brown has provided for our student population. Simply, several of my colleagues in all core content areas, career and technical education, our parents, our students, and community partners wouldn't be able to do it without the library. Ms. Brown and librarian services are an exceptional resource needed. It is far beyond checking in and out resources. Thanks Librarians offers a scope far beyond the capabilities of clerical team members. This includes assembling and indexing databases, providing technical services and training for staff and students so all students may have access to content and resources to be successful while in high school, middle school. Thanks to Ms. Brown, I have experienced firsthand the access to content for my students, being able to access online articles, journals, and resources to be able to inform learning. It's hard to put into words to the entirety of this position, but because of the librarians, students were able to read and review medical articles, learn how to quantify evidence, develop reading, writing, language provided by the training by Ms. Brown. Students in the Biotech, Anatomy, Health Science Academy were able to write claim, evidence, reasoning summaries thanks to Ms. Brown and the library services. Students are able to analyze articles, cite appropriate resources thanks to Ms. Brown. The library offers a place for students who don't have resources at home to be able to complete work, especially in a time with distance learning at the forefront. This has been crucial for several of my students to be in a safe place before, after school, during class, especially for some of my students who require extended time or with mental health disorders. I have watched so many students enter the library feeling a place to be connected, to develop, to grow their minds. This simply can't be done with the clerical team members. It requires a librarian. Thank you for your time. I would be lost without a librarian. The next comments are from Robert Manrow. Sylvia McBride serves our Castle Park community in ways that eclipse the description of a high school librarian. In the last two years, she transformed our library from a book repository to a research center. Our IB diploma candidates have experienced Sylvia's significant impact during the development of their extended essay. This four-thousand-word research paper is required for all diploma candidates. Sylvia trained our diploma candidates in online journal searches and, in concert with our IB English teachers, offered additional trainings and support materials in academic writing formats and citation styles. These fundamental tools prepared our candidates for the extensive writing demands of the EE process. Her skill-building trainings are far-reaching for our candidates who are on the university path to a professional career. Each candidate will draw from their EE experience with every university course, continuing the skill development cultivated in Sylvia's trainings. Throughout the year-long extended essay-writing process, Sylvia worked closely with me in monitoring the series of writing benchmarks for the EE, repeatedly contacting our candidates, ensuring their progress, and maintaining their creative momentum. Constant communication between our candidates and the two of us elevated the extended essay to levels not achieved in the previous eleven years I have coordinated our IB program. As the candidates developed their essays, Sylvia also supported our essay mentors. Each candidate must have a staff member with an expertise in the topic of their essay. She and I hosted mentor meetings directly supporting our EE mentors. We support these teachers in response to their generous and unselfish assistance of our candidates. As with our candidates, Sylvia provided mentors with training and support materials for the EE. The quality of any program depends on the members of the team. The Castle Park High IB Diploma Program added a new member to that team two years ago, and our students experienced a higher-quality educational experience because of Sylvia. Her contributions strengthen our program, the skills of our students, the skills of our staff, and the quality of the service we provide to our community. Sylvia is much, much more than a librarian, and her removal from the library at Castle Park High is a loss we must prevent. The next comments are from Rose Anita Hernandez. As evidenced by his lack of preparedness at the last board meeting, De La Casada was unable to provide information for software purchases that are used by teachers for teaching and learning as it relates to our Microsoft purchases. De La Casada should work with Dan Winters to review Microsoft as well as our student information systems and learning management systems to make sure there are no overlaps. We don't have the funds to continue to pay for overlapping services. Again, why are we paying for Infinite Campus and Jupiter Grades when they provide the same service? They both hold student information and provide attendance, grading, and parent communication. Eliminate one of them. At the last meeting, it was made clear that Microsoft is a key part of our technological infrastructure. Then why are we paying for Google email licenses and G Suite edu use when Microsoft already provides the service via Microsoft 365? By purchasing G Suite products, we are limiting the use of Microsoft products the district is already paying for, causing further duplication and waste of software purchasing. Microsoft Teams and Google Classroom are free, so why are we paying for Canvas? Although Microsoft Teams and Google Classroom are free platforms, we would see an increase in use of Microsoft Teams if Microsoft products were widely used instead of Google. And since Microsoft is so key to our infrastructure, the district must make a choice to eliminate duplications. Google Classroom will not be as efficient as a learning management platform if we stop using G Suite products. We need the district to decide what learning management system teachers will use during distance learning and beyond. The decisions should be based on fiscal security and responsibility, not on ease of use. This should also not be a site decision as it causes inequity between West and Eastside schools in the district. The easy way, i.e. duplicating services, will limit the amount of jobs and services we are able to save and provide. The hard way, i.e. moving towards full use of Microsoft products, will take effort and growth mindset. But if it saves jobs, I am willing to put the work in, and so should other teachers in the district. The next comments are from Stephanie Hubner. Dr. Janney and Board members, I have been reaching out to all Board members, all Sweetwater staff, and leadership teams this past week. Thank you to all who took the time to hear our pleas on behalf of the students of this district. We have a huge mess to clean up district-wide thanks to COVID, but we can do it if we all work together. Last-minute collection plans were made, and by rough estimations, only about half of district assets were returned. Nothing is prepared for distribution because everything was left in quarantine, and as of June 5th, you have no teacher librarians employed. The teacher librarians are warning you now of the impending financial damage that has been caused by COVID. You will not be Williams compliant for 2021 if you do not reemploy district librarians to manage those lost assets. Complete the reports and order the materials that are needed to replace lost items. These jobs are not jobs that others can do. It is such a small part of our day-to-day work on campus, let me tell you. But in this year of COVID, it will be vital to have all hands on deck to solve this problem that is now plaguing the district. Maybe COVID was the universe's way of letting you all know how vital teacher librarians are. We hope you are listening now so that we can be proactive instead of having to be reactive later, which will cost the district much more in the long run. The next comments are from Tina Tom. Good evening, Board members. It is not too late to reverse the catastrophic decision of eliminating all librarians from our district. This will cause further harm to our most vulnerable students. How much can we continue to take from them? Our librarian, Ms. Stephanie Hubner, has always extended beyond her responsibilities and time as a librarian to help our school receive more funding and become a safe and welcoming place for all students, especially our LGBTQT students. When conferencing with my eighth graders before the end of the school year, one of my most quiet students voiced that she would miss the library the most. Students who need a quiet and safe place to focus or escape will be missing the area of the school they seek refuge without Mrs. Hubner. The librarians also aid with the care and usage for the iPads due to administration being overwhelmed with numerous other responsibilities. I plead with you to reconsider and make negotiations with our union to find another way. You will further drive students away from our district if they know that essential resources and personnel are absent from our school. But such as these make me ashamed to be part of our district. Please do what is right and save our librarians. The next comments are from Trevor Angood. My name is Trevor Angood, teacher librarian at Eastlake High School and alumni of Eastlake High School, class of 2002. Let me begin by thanking trustees Hall, Segura, and Solis for taking time this past week to meet with myself and some of my librarian colleagues in examining what the district stands to lose with the removal of teacher librarians across the district. One point I made was my curiosity at the book desert that may be created due to the removal of trained teacher librarians. I created a map that outlined district boundaries, then further outlined trustee areas. Markers were placed for our twenty-three middle and high schools. Public libraries available through the cities of Chula Vista, National City, San Diego, and San Diego County were noted as staffed locations where students could possibly receive help in research, technology, and literacy outside of school hours. Once our teacher librarians are removed, the number of public spaces with staff librarians by trustee area are as follows. Mr. Solis, your students will only have three public libraries, though a fourth falls just outside of your boundaries. This is after the loss of five staffed school libraries. Mr. Pike, your students will only have one public library. This is after the loss of four staffed school libraries. Mr. Tarantino, your students will only have one public library. This is after the loss of four staffed school libraries. Mr. Segura, your students will only have two public libraries. This is after the loss of four staffed school libraries. Mrs. Hall, your students will only have two public libraries. This is after the loss of six staffed school libraries. Simply put, the actions of this board in potentially adopting a resolution that includes the removal of teacher librarians across this district will expand book deserts. Literacy rates will dry up. Access to digital citizenship skills and training, scholarly research expertise, and media literacy acuity will roll away like tumbleweeds under the reduction-enforced resolution. For example, my nephew Oliver, age five, and niece Penelope, age two, live in West Chula Vista. They are zoned to attend Hilltop Middle and Hilltop High School. With the loss of teacher librarians in this district, they will have to travel 2.2 miles in the opposite direction to visit the south branch of the City of Chula Vista Library in order to receive some of the same expertise that they normally should be receiving as a part of their school experience. My teacher librarian colleagues in Grossmont Union High School District created and implemented a gamified summer reading program for students and staff. Imagine the possibilities that my twenty-three teacher librarian colleagues could have come up with to support and enrich student literacy instead of focusing on advocating for our positions in this district for the past three months. Teacher librarians have always put students first. It is now your turn once again to put students first and resend the removal of the teacher librarian particular kinds of service. There are no further speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Masito. We will now move to the formation and approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please read the items being pulled from tonight's agenda?
Yes, the following items are pulled. F3 by staff. F6 by Mrs. Hall, Mr. Segura, and Mr. Tarantino. Item G1 by Mrs. Hall and Mr. Tarantino. Item H1 by Mrs. Hall. Item H3 by Mr. Segura and the public. Item N1 by Mrs. Hall and Mr. Segura. And item N2 by Mrs. Hall.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and read them back just for my own clarification. F3 by staff. Item F6 by Hall, Segura, and Tarantino. Item G1 by Hall and Tarantino. Item H1 by Hall. Item H3 by the public and Mr. Segura. Item M1 by Hall and Segura.
That was N1.
No, I'm not pulling in.
That was N1, like Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. M1 by Mr. Segura?
No. M1 is not pulled. M1 is on the consent agenda.
Okay, so then it's N1 from Hall and Segura, correct? And 2 by Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
And that's the pulls?
Yes.
Okay, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Solis?
I'll go ahead and second. So moved by Solis, seconded by Tarantino. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Ethan, oh, Collier, first on.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we will move on to F3. Any comments or requests by the board?
Yes. I don't have to go first. I look like somebody else might, but yes, I have, I have. I know this has been a long night, but it's our only chance to really share things, so.
Yes, go ahead.
That's why I'm going to go ahead and say what. So I want to first of all thank Dr. Jenny for her report by sharing in her report this evening that there was, that there are approximately 100 people serving on various committees related to reopening the schools. I actually had emailed her a couple of weeks ago to ask for a written report or weekly updates on these committees because I was curious who's really serving on them, how long, what are they working on? What are they coming up with as they work through these different tasks for, so with their focuses? So I'd like to learn more about that. I'm glad she brought it up and shared quite a bit. But if we could know who served on those committees and how long, what they've been working on, I mean, more than just what you shared tonight, I think that would be important. Especially because we'll be, I heard you say something about a forum on June 15th. A lot is happening this month, so having things written and reports along the way is really important for me to get a grasp around what's really going on and what the recommendations are, what the conversations are, so that when it comes down to me making an informed decision, I have everything in a timely way for me to really consider everything. I think what happens with boards, and I don't know how many people are really aware, but a lot of times we don't have enough information before, much before a board meeting is scheduled and announced where the public has enough time to really devote and dig into the materials. I find that difficult, especially during this time when we're all balancing so much on our plate with the budgets, with hearing about all the different changes that are coming, and still struggling to understand what our decisions and the impact of the decisions are on our community before we make them. So I really appreciate that you did that, Dr. Jenny, and I just hope we can get a deeper dive into that in writing before, well before the 15th. I also wanted to say, I would like to ask about what was said about the students that missed credit recovery. This, they were not able to complete their credit recovery and therefore were not graduating this in a timely way. I'd like to have a report on that because it was said that they weren't able to enroll in summer school, which I find trembling. I thought summer school was intended for credit recovery. So I would like to understand that a little better and really confirm what's happening there. Those are my two asks. I would like to report on what I did, have been doing this past couple of weeks. I, I attended, yes, like that was said. I was at a librarian meeting. The librarians invited me to meet with them, which I did last week quite extensively, and I learned a lot. I learned about some of the requirements of the ed code that requires certain things to be done by a certificated librarian. And so most, I think almost all of these, the people I met with were, had been teachers and became librarians after working through a credential program that they had to complete in order to be certificated librarians. I think there are at least two people in our staff that never were teachers in our classroom, but have always been certificated librarians. I've heard, I also heard that at least one school, the principal was opting to have an athletic director rather than a librarian. Because of what that impact would be with class shifts, should the athletic director position, something would have to be cut, and then they'd have to shift people around in classrooms and stuff, and it would impact, that was a harder impact. Or maybe it was the focus, that plus the focus of athletics at that particular school. So that's concerning. I know that perhaps the intention was that somehow principals were going to find the FTE to fund their own librarians, but I'm afraid that hasn't happened. And I think it's really unfortunate because I heard also from parents and students, as we all heard tonight, how important that librarian has been to them. And in some cases, the fact that we had these librarians and what they served and how they did their work drew those people to enroll their students in our district. I also learned how much they impact our management of our devices and our textbooks. They don't, they don't just staff a librarian and watch kids when they come in and out. They actually have to do a lot of work on right, shifting around the different textbooks that are needed across the district. They make sure that they share information across with their colleagues and make sure that they have the correct number of books for the students in the classes. They are, they do a lot of work researching and purchasing books outside in order to have the right amount of text and the right kind of curriculum for teachers that are teaching specific subjects. And they gave really strong examples. I don't know. I'm not going to go into everything, but that was definitely quite significant. The role they play, just in the time they take to get the curriculum into the classroom so that students may be served is very key. So there's a lot of work that they do and the expertise that they provide, not only in managing the resources, being proactive about providing good resources to their teachers, but they also do a lot of resource management, period, which is key. Aside from all the other things that we heard testimony from students and parents and other teachers this evening. So that was time well spent, but I'm really saddened by the fact that what seems to be, in my estimation, what normally happens when you have to do cuts, significant cuts in a district, people look for the big-ticket items that they can just lop away at. And I feel like in some ways, that's what's happened here with our learning centers and with our librarians. Those were big-ticket items. They were easy to identify, and it seems to be the easiest thing to chop away rather than to really go through and refine, really refine what was happening with our, you know, the recommendations. So the other thing I did, I attended a parent forum that was provided by Dr. Foulcher to Learning Center parents. And the one, I actually attended a couple of them. There were two of them, and I've attended both of them and listened. I just listened. The second one I attended, there were several people that apparently were not let in because I saw, I saw somebody trying to tell the Dr. Foulcher that people were waiting and they weren't being let in. I myself got, I was in the meeting, and then I got, I guess, kicked out of the meeting because I didn't identify myself. So I texted somebody who let Dr. Foulcher know I was waiting in the waiting room, and I got back in. And I heard a lot of the information that was shared, a lot of, a lot of very deep conversation that sometimes was confusing to parents, is what I heard. And there was absolutely no Spanish provided, no Spanish information was given out to parents. And a lot of parents' question were around being able to enroll their kids because they were guaranteed being assigned to a learning center wherever they end up, but they would still have to enroll their parents. And every parent, there were more than one parent. I can't remember. I couldn't count them all, and I wouldn't say that. But they all were having trouble enrolling that student that was in the learning center. And then at least one parent had problems enrolling her other two students because that third student had to be enrolled before she complete the whole thing. So they had to, and there wasn't any, so that was a real bubble. And at first, the first meeting I attended was on June 3rd, and parents were told at that time that they, that Dr. Foulcher thought that problem had been corrected, but he would check into it. And on June 5th, it was still happening, although I believe a couple of those parents said that they were able to resolve it by working with the registrar. So I wonder how our registrars have been doing in trying to enroll people with this situation because it doesn't sound like it went very smoothly. So those were three meetings I did with staff. I also have, I attended the forum Dr. Foulcher had about George Floyd. I mean Floyd, George, was it George Floyd? George Floyd and the impact his death has had on our world. And it was very informative because it was attended by our staff. I just listened there too. I didn't feel it was my place to comment. One of the things that I, I heard, I heard, I've been listening to different forums and reading different posts and news, nudist articles and for this past several years, right? Because we've had this ongoing problem where people are suffering. They're Black Americans. They suffer from violent deaths at the hands of the authorities in our, in our country. So what I, what I also heard, I've learned over the last few years, is how much that's, how much everyday life is impacted for them just because of the color of their skin. I'm glad that we're trying to work on equity. I can say that from all my, all my life, the title equity, I thought meant a lot. It doesn't seem to mean much anymore because I've been fighting for equity for a lot of, you know, most of my life. I felt I was standing in the gap. I was always trying to stand in the gap and bring a voice for the people that didn't have, have a voice. And I can say right now that after listening to staff and hearing their stories and the pain they feel and the, and the treatment they've had at the hands of our staff, at their community, as they've grown up, that, that we are far from being where we should be. I don't think that a department or one person can lead us out of that. I don't think, I think our district goal is that equity is embedded in every department, not just the sole shoulders of one person or one department, but it's everybody's responsibility. And I posted something because I have family that I'm, I'm very concerned with. When I read the statistics, I attended one, a symposium that was led by our legislators and Progressive Party, a progressive group. It was called Enough is Enough. And they had some shocking statistics that you, you know, you see these names in the newspapers. I would, I would love to have a whole list and put it up on a wall and just all those names and say their names out loud every chance I could just to keep reminding myself. But 681 Black Americans in California have been killed since 2012 by law enforcement. 681 Black Americans have been killed since 2012 in our state alone by law enforcement. 13% of the population, Black Americans make up 13% of our total population, yet 25% of those who are killed by law enforcement. Those are statistics we have to live with. And, and all I can say is that what I heard our staff, teachers, and other staff members in this forum last week say was where were the board members? Why hadn't we done anything? And that really, that, I didn't jump, and I didn't jump in as soon as the demonstration started and start posting things on my Facebook or saying, you know, sending out statements because I really felt like it, it would be too little. Whatever I could do, it wouldn't be enough because it's very heartbreaking what's happening when you know this is happening to people in our country and the systemic racism in our country and in our world. And even, even those of us who feel like we've done so much good in our life and fought for equality for everyone and tried to stand in the gap for those who don't have things, it's never enough. But I wanted to say that it's not going to, it doesn't take, you can't call out a department in a school district and say, this is how we're going, and this is going to be the way we do it. It can't, that won't be the way it happens. Everyone has to examine their own heart. Everyone has to do their own self-reflection. And the only way we'll ever conquer racism in our country and change the system is if we all recognize that we have toxic racism, and it's ingrained in us, and it's ingrained in our society, and it's ingrained in our institutions. And we must do self-reflection first on ourselves and admit where we fall short and listen to the stories and hear the people that are talking about the pain. I mean, I, I have family members that I, you know, I know this is happening to them. So when, when they're stopped or where Mr. Dumas, our dear teacher, our history teacher that was Teacher of the Year this year, when he shares about having to stop a group of young basketball players leaving their practice and having such a great time together because they're, they're done with the day, they're going to go have fun, go get a shake together, you know? And they're, he sees them across the parking lot getting into a car and joking with each other. All five of them are going to get into this little car and take off. And he was compelled to go tell them they need to calm down. They need to watch themselves. They need to be careful because they're riding all five black, young Black men in the car after, at the close of the evening to go home. Can you imagine every time your child leaves to have to warn them? That's what is happening in our country, and it has been happening in our country. And I, for one, am, I know we all have, we all have a problem. We all have a problem, and we have to admit it, and we have to stand against it. And we have to take every day and every chance and really stand in solidarity and say, Black Lives Matter, this isn't right, and we have to keep, keep up the pressure against it. And I think part of that is in our discussions around equity, yes, definitely. Because I can point out things on our, on our agenda tonight that I can. Because I can point out things on our, on our agenda tonight that, that I can say are not equitable. Because they're targeting the things of our most vulnerable communities. But, um, I wanted to make that statement loud and clear tonight. I hear you. I hear our, I hear the people that were in that forum. I want to say Eric Hahn said profound things that evening. Natasha Bailey, Aiden Esparza, Alicia Benner. There were so many people and I wrote down their names, but Colleen Davey, Zenolina Watkins. These people really impacted my life that night. They were talking about our district. And they're talking about, uh, why, why aren't there people in our district, in our classrooms that look like us? That are teaching our kids that look like us? And I have that question to, to all of us at, in this authority. Why aren't we doing that? I think there is a way to adopt some resolutions and adopt, um, policies as a board that would formalize, um, hiring practices that would target our, that would bring in more equity as just in who we hire in our administrative positions. To be more representative or at least to be more, um, across the board. So that when there's principals and administrators at school, they are representative of our minorities as well. And that's, uh, I want to thank you all for your patience as I got that out. But I did put a statement on my, um, on my Facebook finally this week. But I didn't want to do it at the beginning because I needed to listen. And I think we all need to listen, but now it's time to act as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Who would like to go next? Mrs. Segura?
Sure, sure. I'm ready. So, um, you know, we normally we've had our, our traditional graduation. So it's hard for me not to congratulate, um, our eighth grade class. This is, uh, of 2020. And for the hard, your hard work has paid off and, you know, now you'll, now, now you're off to your next adventure, which is high school. Um, and congratulations to our high school senior class of 2020. Um, graduating high school is a major step in life and one that you have earned over the last four years. As you move on to college, trade school apprenticeships, the milit, the military, um, or other career opportunities. Please take time to reflect, uh, back on your journey. Please take time to remember all the wonderful memories you have created, memories you have created. Um, and many of the friends that you have, um, made in high school will be your friends for life. And this is coming from a, a guy that, that just had his 40th high school reunion. And 200 of us still get together. So there's proof. Um, and I really look forward to, um, when we're able to hold your traditional, um, graduation ceremonies. That is very important. Um, where everybody will be able to participate. Um, and, um, finally, I can't not forget the wonderful online, um, um, adult ed, a graduation ceremony that was put on, online. It was, they did a fantastic job. Um, and we had many students who earned their GED, high school equivalency or diploma. And I heard many heartfelt speeches, um, during this ceremony from students, uh, teachers and administrator-like. And a lot of love, um, in those, uh, speeches. So congratulations to everybody, uh, on this tremendous achievements, um, um, through this unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. And please be safe over the summer. Um, I'd like to add that, um, you know, I, I've been a big proponent of trying to get ethnic studies in the curriculum for five years. And I've gotten a couple of reports saying why we can't do it or where we're at with it. And I, I really, you know, if it can't become a reality now, when will it ever become a reality? That it's so important for us to learn, not only learn our cultures, but other cultures. So I'd like to know where we're at with that. Um, and I, I too met with, uh, um, spent, I think it was a couple of hours, um, on the phone, on the Zoom call with the librarians. And I learned a lot about, um, all the work they do and I don't want to repeat everything that, uh, Paula said. But, um, I echo all her, all her, um, all her remarks on that. Um, and, you know, and I, and I truly feel that, you know, the eliminations of the, the learning centers and the librarians, you know, have the greatest negative effect on our, our most social, our economically disadvantaged families. I really, I really believe that and that, that's gonna hurt a lot and it's not right. Um, and I, I hope that we could come to, um, some sort of agreement with our unions and, um, where we could, you know, save some of those jobs and, um, keep, keep some of those, um, they're all fine employees, but keep, you know, keep some of those, um, employees in place to help, um, teach. Um, what else do I have here? Let's see, um, as well, um, I, I can tell you, I, um, I stand with the Black Leg Matters, uh, the Black Leg Matters. And I fully support the protests happening around the country and in the world. And I'm glad it's continuing and it's a strong, strong, uh, movement. Um, and we need to eradicate systemic racism. And, um, systemic, systemic, systemic reform is needed in our policing. Um, and Paula said it very eloquently that, um, self-reflection is the key. Um, and I've been doing a lot of that, um, and, you know, thinking about my shortcomings and how I could fix it. Um, and, um, and Paula said something about listening and that was funny because, um, I'm talking to my daughter. She said, um, in one of her IB classes that, well, in her debating, um, one of her debating classes. I'm not sure if it's IB class, but anyways, she, in her debating, she said the best, the, the most important thing about debating is listening. So, um, I've been doing a lot of that, um, and, uh, and learning. Um, so let me see if that's all I have here. And I think it was already been asked, I think, uh, trustee Solis mentioned or asked, uh, in regards to what is our requirements, um, for education code in terms of the, a librarian record? So I'd really like to see, um, something on that. Um, and then I, I was also understanding that we get money from the state to, to specifically go to the librarians and, um, and I want to know what code that is and where that money's gonna go if we're not gonna spend it on librarians. Um, I hope that's not true. Like I said earlier, I really hope that we could, uh, come to some sort of agreement and, and keep some of these critical, um, educators in place to help our students, uh, make it through high school. And I think that's all I have. President Tarantino, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segura. Mr. Solis, do you want to go next?
Yes, yes. Thank you, President Tarantino. Yes, so, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Hall and, uh, Mr. Segura for your words. And it, it is true, uh, black lives matter. Uh, it's wrong what's happening and we, we have to stand up to it. And, and I, I appreciate those words. I wanted to say also with regards to the librarians, I did, I met with the librarians and, uh, I, I re, I wanted to let them know that, um, that they, if they felt that they weren't valued, that that was, that's not even close to, uh, how we feel. Uh, not how I feel, but, uh, uh, that we're gonna try to work through this and see, see what we could do. Uh, but it was, it was a very informative, uh, session with, with the librarians and I appreciated their time. Uh, also I had a meeting, uh, with the, the CSBA delegate, uh, uh, the Region 17, uh, June 1st. And they discussed the budget, um, and they, they wanted us to make sure that we still reached out to our legislators. There's still time to make sure we let them know we need, we need the funds and we need flexibility. The, the big thing was, uh, flexibility with the funds because what, what's coming, coming, uh, because COVID is just, it's gonna be crazy because we're gonna need masks for students, staff, I mean, masks for everybody. We're gonna need gloves and cleaning supplies. So that, that's gonna add an extra, uh, extra amount of money to, to cover all that. And if you think of the number of students that we need, that we need these masks for every single day, I mean, it's, it's gonna add up. It's not, it's not cheap. So it's, uh, we're gonna need that flexibility. So, uh, as a board, as a board and as, uh, community members, we can call our legislators and just, just let them know. We, we, we need, if they want us to open up the schools, we're, we're gonna need all this stuff. It's, we can't just send our kids there and, uh, expect them to just go the way it used to be. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be different and, uh, we're gonna need a lot of funding. Uh, so, so we focused a lot on that. And also, uh, they focused on keeping our parents informed. And I think that's one thing that we're, we're doing. Um, and also I wanted to, uh, say thank you to all those who made that, uh, parade for the class of 2020 possible. Um, it was, it was amazing, uh, seeing the faces of, of the kids. You can tell some were very happy and, uh, some were very, uh, sad because of the way, uh, their senior year had, had gone. But, uh, the majority of them, uh, were, were very happy and very pleased with, with, uh, and then seeing the parents, the parents also being so proud of, uh, of their kids and writing on the sides of their cars, uh, gratitude and like just happiness for their kids graduating. I thought it was amazing. It was wonderful. And, uh, really appreciate all those that made that possible because it was, it was fantastic. And I also wanted to thank, uh, the city of National City, uh, the Mile of Cars, uh, Suhi, Suhi Foundation.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Oh, thanks. And, uh, and the mayor of National City for, for getting the yard signs for the seniors at, uh, at Suhi. And, uh, I think that, that, uh, the, uh, the family and I were able to go out there and help put them up in the mile of cars. So the whole mile of cars had the, the seniors of, uh, of Sweetwater and, uh, it, it was great seeing the families come and take pictures with the signs and, and all that. So that, that was fantastic. So that they raised over $15,000 for that. It was amazing. I think it's a, a span of two weeks. So it's pretty impressive. So thank you for that. And also I wanted to see if, uh, I know it's, uh, uh, Mr. Marinovich is, uh, uh, last month with us at the CBOC. So I wanted to see if, uh, we can have a recognition for him at the end of the, of our, of this, uh, month's meeting, so our last meeting, uh, for all the years of service that he has provided for, for our district. Making it one of, uh, the best, uh, CBOCs here regionally and probably in, in the state. So I think, I think it would be great for us to, to recognize him for, for, for that. And with that, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Uh, Mr. Pike?
Yeah, um, first off, I wanted to, uh, thank Dr. Salkild and all her staff for the work on that budget. That was, uh, very informative, very intense and very long. And I, I'm sure they worked a lot of hours on it. So thanks again for all their help. Um, I too wanted to thank the, uh, district staff and the ASB coordinators because they did pull off, as Mr. Solis said, a great day for the seniors. I know Frank and I and Nick and Arturo, we all were there. We all participated. And it was great, uh, to see the faces of those kids when they, I think they were totally surprised. And you could tell that they were, they were very happy that all this had been done for them. And, uh, so I wanted to thank the ASB coordinators because they, they did a really good job. And the last thing is I wanted to congratulate all the employees of the year that we saw on the video. And I know in the past we've always gone down and, and give the awards personally because I think it's important. And, uh, so I just wanted to let them know that even though they're just on video, we still appreciate their hard work and congratulations. And that's it.
Okay, Mr. Pike, um, Ethan, do you have any comments to make?
Ethan had to leave. It was, it was getting too late for him. So I told him, please, don't feel like you have to stay on.
Uh, then, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and go. I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, all of the employees who are retiring this year, uh, for their years of service. Uh, again, um, I'm sorry we weren't able to do it in person, uh, like we usually do. But, uh, but, uh, please know that we, we appreciate all of the things that you've done. Not only for students, uh, for your colleagues, but also for the district, uh, in your years of service. Um, I'd also like to echo, uh, what everyone has said about the, uh, uh, senior activity, uh, that took place, uh, last week. Um, you know, there were a lot of individuals, uh, that were concerned about the logistics and the equity and all of that. And, um, I think, I think the outcome showed that we can trust staff to do the how in terms of what we put forward in terms of a vision. And, uh, there was a lot of logistics and moving parts that went into that, that celebration. And, um, and I think that, um, you know, the timing, uh, just, just the timing, you know, two and a half hours for each session and the last car went through with five minutes to spare. And I think, uh, that in itself is a phenomenal accomplishment. And so thank you, uh, Sasha Scott, for your creativity and for working with us in terms of, uh, making it happen. Uh, again, I think it was very uplifting. Um, like Dr. Jenny said, uh, students, parents, and even the dogs that were in the cars. I think that they had fun too. Uh, I saw some of them with, uh, little mitre boards on and, um, uh, and so I think it was, I think it was a, a, a good substitute. Not for a graduation, but a good, uh, activity for the seniors to take part in. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Manny Rubio for his cooperation with the Star News, uh, for the edition that came out, uh, last Thursday, which really spotlighted all of our graduates. And, uh, uh, they listed the names of all of the graduates from all of our schools. And then certain schools did take out full-page ads, uh, most of them in color in terms of congratulating the, the graduates of the class of 2020. Um, I think it was, uh, again, uh, a great, a great tribute to a class that missed out on an awful lot of activities that would normally have been, um, part of their, um, senior year. Um, like, um, it was mentioned before, the adult graduation, uh, the virtual graduation. I'd like to thank Dr. Burke and Dr. Marquand for putting that together. And again, um, the time and effort that went into it, uh, it was excellent. And the thing that I was amazed with, they were able to capture everything that they usually do, uh, in person. Uh, the, the speeches from the graduates, um, the, the past, um, graduates who came back and spoke, uh, after they'd been in college or had moved on from the adult school. I think it was very good. Um, and, um, and again, it was, um, it was a good celebration in terms of what we were able to do within the constraints of the, uh, COVID-19, uh, restrictions. And I wish everyone a good summer and take the time to recharge and, um, uh, spend time with your family and friends and, um, and we'll see you back on August 3rd. And, um, that's all I have. Okay, so we will.
I forgot one thing.
Sure.
And with, it has to do with regards to, uh, O2 that we had today, uh, with the sale. Uh, I know it said we, we needed to have a, a special session for, uh, 10 days or, or before. So I'm wondering if that's already in the works. I don't know if we, we have something, uh, set, um, lined up for, for that special session.
No, but we will work on that tomorrow and get something scheduled with everyone.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, we will now move on to, uh, item F6. And it was pulled by Hall, Segura and myself. So, um, who would like to go first? I'll go first. Um, I, I, I had a question, um, David, about the, um, the last part with Alliance Technology. Uh, this is the, uh, integrator that would provide the equipment that can be installed in school buses and provide wireless internet, uh, connection to students. David, I under, I see where we've, we've, we've entered into a three-year contract with that particular vendor. Is there, is there any reason why a three-year contract, um, as opposed to a year-to-year contract?
Good evening, uh, President Tarantino, Board Trustee Superintendent Jenny. Uh, yes, uh, we, we were able to receive discounts. Generally when we, um, look at contracts, it's basically one, three and five. Five tends to be too long. Uh, three provides us with some discounts if the technology is part of our plans from a, from a long-term perspective. And, uh, Alliance Technology and the Cradle Point Technology, uh, will fit in with our, our plans going. And Alliance Technology and the Cradle Point Technology will fit in with our plans going forward. So that's why we chose the three-year.
Okay, thank you very much, David. Mr. Segura, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So yeah, my only question, David, was is there any limit on the usage amount of data that the students could use from these mobile Wi-Fi? Or I don't know if it's called mobile Wi-Fi, but from the connectivity device? What happens if they use up their monthly allocation if that's how it works?
Okay. Mr. Segura, just for clarification on the question, is this for the Cradle Point? Or is this for the Sprint Hot Spots?
The Hot Spots.
Okay. The Sprint Hot Spots, even though it indicates unlimited, there is a 10 gig maximum per month for the student. And so that is a great deal of information. But they indicated, and this is Sprint, and we have to validate this, that when they approach that meter, they won't be cut off. We will get warnings regarding that and we will be billed accordingly. But that billing is coming to us. It won't be going to the student.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Welcome.
Mrs. Hall?
Thank you, President Tarantino. Mr. Delaxata, I just had one question. So this is about connectivity for the internet. And does it fit into this schedule that you created at all? This is something new though, right? Back in 2018, you provided the board with a lot of information on a strategic framework and architecture update for information technology. And there is a schedule that talks about the systems overview. So we were not providing connectivity at home for anybody back then, correct?
We were not. That's correct.
And this is for those students that don't have it in their home, right?
That is correct.
So do they have to all, is it only in the bus that it's happening? Or are some students getting something like a hotspot in their home?
The three components of the connectivity board item is that the Cox Communication C2C is a modem or a hotspot that will be provided at home. But these are basically those students that qualify for free and reduced. Not all students qualify for that. So the 1,000 hotspots from Sprint is intended to address those students that are in great need. However, they don't qualify for the C2C program. And then there are other students that won't be able to qualify for both. And so consequently, we came up with the wireless technology because it was cost-effective for providing buses at locations, in this particular case, school sites, so that they can come to the school, park within the proximity of the bus, and then connect to the internet.
And is this the, this is the item that is being funded with Title I carryover? Is that it?
Yes, the entire project in itself. That's correct. It is going to be paid from Title I carryover.
Right. So.
So that's three questions.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Are you having a problem standing up? I'm gonna ask my questions anyway. The problem with it is, I wanted to make this point. Title I carryover meant for free and economically disadvantaged students will not be used to provide direct services, but to provide hotspots. And something that a lot of, I just want to point out that most families have their own wireless or their own internet services in their homes. That's what the, and I get why we're doing the Title I because there's no other money. But again, everything comes out of the pot of money that was supposed to be serving directly the most economically disadvantaged. And I just want everyone to keep that in mind when we talk about school site plans that is coming up soon. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no further discussion or questions, I will entertain a motion to approve ratified student connectivity agreements that were provided in F6 to provide internet access at home for students with the most need or with special circumstances.
So move. Second.
Moved by Solis, seconded by Mr. Segura. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Call.
I'm gonna vote no because I think there was money directly intended for this type of service coming from the federal government under Title IV.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes four yes, one no.
Okay, the next item on the agenda would be G1, to approve the submission of draft school plans for student achievement for the 2020-2021 school year. And it was pulled by both myself and Mrs. Hall.
Go ahead, Mr. Tarantino.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank all of the individuals who were involved in putting these plans together. As if you look through them, they're very comprehensive. And they cover a lot of interesting statistics in terms of what's happening in our schools. So I'd like to say some of my takeaways. And again, this is not a condemnation. It's just some things that, you know, we've all realized that it's not gonna be solved overnight. And it's something that we're working on. And I think that our department of, under Dr. Foulter, his plan is working to address these things. And again, I commend him for initiating the courageous conversations that surround all of this. But we still have issues with bullying in our schools. The suspension rates for all students are up from 16, 17. Homeless youth usually have the highest suspension rates throughout our network of schools. African-American and Hispanic students still have the highest percentage of Ds and Fs. There were some interesting comments that were made in some of the school statistics. The one that really surprised me was that there's a recommendation to move away from credit recovery and towards a competency-based model which promotes long-term growth. And I don't know if that's because of the, I believe it's the Access Program. I believe that's what it's called. I may have got that wrong. But anyway, I thought that was kind of an interesting comment in terms of, you know, because we hear so much about the fact that, you know, there isn't enough opportunities for credit recovery. In fact, we just heard some speakers tonight saying there was no opportunity for credit recovery. And yet, at some of the schools, there's a desire to move away from credit recovery and towards a different model. Let's see. ELs, homeless and foster youth, students with disabilities, and African-American student subgroups demonstrate the greatest need for targeted interventions to meet academic and social needs. And then some of the middle schools put in their plans, the challenges that were experienced with the last 80 days of distance learning. So I thought that that was something that, you know, we're working on again. We had to implement in a very short timeline. And I commend the teams that put those resources together. And but I think as these work groups move forward with their ideas, I think that that will be reflected in our start of our 2020-21 school year. And then the last thing is the focus on building relationships and trust with students in terms of the distance learning. So I think that that's important, that we maintain that focus, that we maintain those relationships. And I think that we've started to do that. And I believe that it'll get better as we move forward. But again, thanks to everyone who helped put these plans together. They were comprehensive and, again, provided a lot of good information. That was all I had. Mrs. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino. I was, I also was seeing much of the same things you were. I wanted to focus on one school in particular, and that is Marvista Academy. If on one of the comments, they've struggled in many of the places you specifically talked about. Their expulsions or suspensions for African-Americans went up higher than anybody else's in any other ethnic group at the school this past year. There if, when you look at the combined different rates of things like suspensions, Ds and Fs, everything looks like it's moving in the right direction. But when you break out the subgroups, there's definitely disparities for the special ed students and for African-Americans. And some other groups have lost ground instead of gaining it. And overall, there's, I think the English Language Arts is really significantly losing ground. I would say that a lot of, they only have those students for two years. I want to point that out. A lot of the issues that our students are experiencing in those grade levels really are culmination of the years they spent six years previously in the feeder school because they're not obviously getting what they need in those schools in order to be successful when they come to our school. But definitely needs work. However, one of the things that stood out to me is on page 28. I want to read it to you. This is, it calls out for resource inequities. Briefly identify and describe any resource inequities identified as a result of the required needs assessment as applicable. Parentheses, can include the top identified needs for goals one, two, and three. End parentheses. And Marvista Academy responded with this. Marvista Academy has identified the following resource inequities. The change in Title I funds reduced our allocation for an attendance coordinator from a .4 to a .2, a restorative opportunity class teacher from full-time to a .4, as well as no longer able to fund an avid coordinator. Additionally, we are going into our second year of having a part-time assistant principal. That's not all, I would say, that this school has experienced. They are, they obviously are gonna lose a librarian. They're gonna, they are putting money into a CIS coordinator. That does not, to me, that's the data cruncher. It's not the person that's providing the one-on-one or the restorative practice and being impactful in that. And it's not the avid coordinator that helps with the kids that really need to gain the skills of all that. They're not gonna be able to do that. But yet, they're still being, I think, encouraged perhaps by the district to fund that CIS coordinator. And I find that regretful. But I wanted to, first of all, point out that Title I funds could have been allocated for those very things instead of being used and carried over so that it could fund digital access, which we should be providing with the state. And Tony Durman and Governor Newsom has been talking all the time about how they've got to get partners in our communities to provide technology for us. The federal government is putting out money in their money that's targeting for technology. We just heard tonight, there's money that has to be spent by the end of December, some of those funds. I mean, I'm really disappointed that we can't use these for the highest. Marvista Academy is one of our most challenged schools. And yet, we can't fund them or give them the supplemental support they need to make sure that those people that are in the classrooms, teaching our children, the administrators that are having to deal with the parents and go in and observe teachers because that's what the APs do. They can't even find the time to do that because they're stretched thin. And I'm disappointed we're not funding our highest need schools with more of the Title I funds that were intended for them. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments or discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the submission of the draft school plans for student achievement for the 2020-2021 school year. I will move approval.
Second.
Moved by Tarantino, seconded by Solis. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Call.
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
The next item on the agenda is item H1, to approve an increase to the expenditure for the agreement for the professional service with Strategic Consultant for Schools LLC. And that was pulled by Mrs. Hall.
So I just wanted to ask, is this, this is actually a change order to the original agreement? Is that correct? This is for the consultant that was doing our special ed study that we're supposed to be completed in January. We haven't received it yet because there was an invoice sitting there for $800 that wasn't part of the original cost. So they had to hold it back until they got this approval to us. Apparently. Is that correct?
Not quite correct. I'm gonna let Dr. Foulter respond to that, though. It's not quite correct.
So thanks for the question. A clerical error led to the amount being entered differently in two places, on the contract and then on the analysis. So once we get this approved, hopefully tonight by the board, we can pay the difference. The initial amount, which was, of course, like I said earlier, different in a couple of places. The initial invoiced amount has been paid, but we need to cut up a check for an additional $800. Our plan, in terms of the report, is to release the report to the board this week and also to invite the reviewers, those who conducted the study, to come and present the information to the board. We don't have a date yet. I know it's been very difficult to schedule them. They are conducting studies in other parts of the state. But our intention is to have them come within the next couple of weeks to share the information with you personally and to answer any questions you may have about the study.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mrs. Hall?
I'm just wondering, you know, why they couldn't have, you know, I brought it. it, paid it, and then ratified it. Because it seems like we do that a lot with other things. We just did, you know, I mean, we've done it every every almost every board meeting. For $800 to have to hold this up for $800 seems like there should have been something proactive done so it didn't have to wait for us to get it on this board agenda. And we maybe we would have had our special ed report already. Just wanted to point that out. With that, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, moved by Hall, seconded by Solis. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Hall?
Yes.
Solis, you're up.
Yes.
Yes.
Segura?
No.
I didn't I didn't hear my name, but I'm voting yes.
I'm sorry, I said Tarantino.
Okay, I didn't hear it.
Motion passes four yes, one no.
Okay. Next item is H3, recognize and support Black Lives Matter commitment to fight racial injustice. And it was pulled by the public and Mr. Segura. We'll hear from the public first.
Yes, I have two comments on this item.
Okay.
The first comments are from Marie Champagne. Good evening, Board members and superintendent. Let me first acknowledge the efforts being placed on the Black Lives Matter movement by the district. It provides added discussions that began with the presentations provided by Dr. Chris Edman with trauma informed teaching and now alludes to the most impactful part of topics on race in the educational system. As with all issues in systematic racism and implicit bias, once once you can personally relate, then the true injustice is seen and felt. And for many non Blacks around the world, people are rallying to the injustice felt by so many. I speak to you as a Black woman of Haitian origins with multiple races within my family. I have experienced direct racism, implicit biases, and microaggressions throughout my educational and professional careers. I could spend provide I could provide detailed accounts of these disparities with you, but there is not enough time. What I will say is, I appreciated the open forum facilitated by Dr. Foulter last week in which many of us got to share our challenges, possible solutions, and a space for ongoing discussions. We are finally at a time in society where non Blacks people are willing to ask the right questions and gain understanding of the injustices that have plagued one community. To fully immerse in these discussions, we need to first ensure that students and staff in this district are not plagued by the use of racial epithets on school campuses and that there are repercussions for this type of hate and ignorance. Secondly, continuing with trauma informed practices, restorative practice, and conflict resolution training has provided a platform that can bridge the discussion. Lastly, I would add, we all have the ability to affect change as we move forward, and I am glad to see the responsibility is not only Black people throughout the use through the use of rhetorical ethics. As my last thought, just as in the NFL, we have now all seen how leadership in an organization can squash and silence the true issues. And so I urge the district to continue to move forward with confronting the injustices of Black people and all people of color. Respectfully submitted. And the next comments are from Vernon Moore. Dear Board of Trustees and Superintendent, this agenda item affirms Sweetwater Union High School District's commitment to support the Black Lives Matter movement and address persistent racial injustice in our society. As an African American employee of this district, I am proud to voice my approval for this action. Since the inception of our country, America has existed under the specter of racism. From the brutal and horrific conditions of colonization and slavery, to the legalized discrimination and oppression of Jim Crow, to the proud and steadfast defiance of the civil rights movement, to the massive protests and unrest we are witnessing today, African Americans have endured the ever present shackle of being evaluated not by the content of our character, but by the pigmentation in our skin. Of course, the sickness of racism is not only confined to Black folks. Like the COVID-19 global pandemic, the viral infection of racism is airborne and affects all of us. A racist police officer is not just bad for the African Americans in the community he or she patrols. The racist actions of an officer can affect the entire planet. As such, I am confident that our upcoming resolution to support Black Lives Matter will encompass many of the actions necessary to address systemic racism and continue to lead our district down the path of being a truly of being a truly of, sorry, of being a truly equity driven environment. Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, Mr. Segura.
Yes. So I appreciate the staff has brought this item forward. As educators, we need to acknowledge that that the education system was itself built on institutional racism we are fighting against. We owe it to our students to teach them about the history of racism and provide tools for how to disassemble this structure. I would ask that the resolution that is forthcoming in June include language that requires any contracts we enter into with the police include provisions supporting this resolution along with previous resolutions to ensure safety and support for our students. This this could include a community work group that includes school staff, students, parents discuss these policing practices. And that's what I wanted to add to that. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments or discussion, I will entertain a motion to recognize and support Black Lives Matter, the commitment to fight racial injustice, and have staff work on a detailed resolution to bring forward to the board on June 22 of 2020.
I'm on.
Second.
Moved by Solis, seconded by Segura. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we now move to item N1, to the approval of the renewal to approve the renewal of designated contracts, pulled by both Mrs. Hall and Mr. Segura.
So I'll go. So if you can you bring that up on the screen, the what I was looking at was the which was the Microsoft Corporation, that one. And my question was just when I read the contract, I think it was in the contract, it said something about the services were based on the usage and so many hours. And my question was like, how many year what has been our past usage over the last few years? Just so I could get a sense of, you know, are we really utilizing it? Or do we need more or that sort of thing?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Segura. We we have slated approximately 160 hours for this. Based on the last three years, we average around 150 to 200. We used a lot of hours back in 2018. However, we felt that we could get by with 160. And again, if we need more, then we'll go through that. If we if we do not use all those hours, it's not like we have to expend it. We are not charged for that. And so consequently, we get credits and or credits against the next renewal. So we don't spend it just to spend it. Basically, this is for critical support systems at both that scale matrix and on our network infrastructure. So if we need it, we have 160 hours for emergency use.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Hall.
Thank you. I had a question on the Microsoft as well. I think I'm it was would you purchase would you consider this purchase for infrastructure? Or is it is it an application that you're purchasing?
It's engineering support. So it's it's not a application that we're purchasing. It is for this for software infrastructure that operates our applications on our network.
All right. Thank you. My next question isn't for Mr. Delacazada. It's for I guess for Jenny Salkeld or Mr. Williams. Because it's about the fraud hotline. I wanted to I asked the question because when I reviewed all this, it it's all signed and dated from when we it's the original agreement. I don't see anything in here that's amending the agreement. I don't see any new paperwork in here. So when I asked my question about why isn't the new amendment or, you know, anything current dated document included in the board item, Dr. Jenny reminded me that we had approved this already in April. And they're just correcting something on the budget line for this board item. So I still don't understand why we don't have a current document if that's the case, because everything in here that I have was from 2018. So the document on the board agenda item is not current. And I wanted to point that out and find out why why not? And is it going to be? So now that, you know, the historical record on our board agenda isn't correct. So can we get it correct?
Dr. Salkeld, do you want to start that answer and and then hand it to George? Or how do you want to do that?
Sure, I can address the first point. So yes, this item was just to clarify a funding source because I think it was timing on our last board meeting on the or at least the board meeting on 27th. We're not able to make that slight change. But as I understand it, George can correct me because this was prior to me coming on board with the district. This is a five year agreement. I believe the term indicated that we had this extension period that we can exercise to carry through 21 the fiscal or the term of 2021 through 2023. I think and I'm looking at the contract here. George, can you correct that? Provide background on that item? Just set it the term section. I'm looking at it here under section three.
Yes, good evening. So the the original term of the agreement was, Dr. Salkeld, as you mentioned, February 18, 2018 until January 13, 2021. And so we are able to exercise the additional renewal or contract extensions. And so that we're bringing it, you know, again, we're bringing it for due to the error that was made on the resource code. I am happy to send in a copy of the a copy of the new renewal. It'll be the same contract, same terms and conditions. The vendor just signed a one page document indicating that they'd like to renew for an additional term. So all of the terms and conditions on this document that we have, that that is that is what stands.
Thank you, George. Mr. Williams?
You're welcome.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item N1.
Second.
Moved by Hall, seconded by Segura. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Hall?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, and the last item on the agenda is N2, approve the request for proposal number 90-2741-GW and authorize staff to negotiate and enter into an agreement with KNN Public Finance for municipal financial advisory services. The proposer with the highest points point total based on the evaluation criteria of the RFP and as determined by the evaluation committee. And that was pulled by Mrs. Hall.
Yes. Well, I was kind of surprised that this wasn't provided or mentioned or even presented to the finance audit, the Audit and Finance Subcommittee. We didn't know you were going out for RFP. And I would would have expected to be have been informed as a board that you were going out for an RFP and at least have provided the opportunity to have suggestions made by the Audit and Finance Subcommittee. So can you explain why that didn't happen?
I, trustee Hall, so as I've been informed in the past, actually, 2015 was the first year that the district went out for an RFP for these services. At that point, it was did not go to any committee for review or the audit committee. These services are to provide financial information related to the bonds or through any short term financings. And so that approach was done currently, and that that process was modeled, again, this time when the contract came up for expiration this month, of going out for an RFP. But currently, the government code allows the district to pursue these services without going through an RFP. But it is best practice to go out to the market when these contracts renew. So the template and the process was modeled as it had been five months, five years ago. Again, these are more for the municipal bonds and for the work that we do at the credit rating agencies.
So this is this is replacing the person or the firm that we've had doing that work since 2015?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that piece.
This is replacing the previous the current financial advising agency that we've had since 2015? Is that correct?
Correct. That firm was also one of the firms that responded. We had 18 firms that notified via our DemandStar portal where we post the RFP, and we only had two proposals.
But I noticed that they in part of this response, they listed San Diego Unified as being their is that correct?
That is one of their firms. Both both firms that provided a response have worked with San Diego Unified and other local districts.
Was that were they your bond the bond counsel for San Diego Unified when you were the CFO at San Diego Unified?
The current incumbent firm and this new firm have both been prior organizations that I have worked with.
The current incumbent, you mean Rollup or whatever that is?
Fieldman, Rollup, and Associates, correct.
Right. And when you under your under your CFO, you actually replaced them with this same firm that we're that you're bringing forward to us now?
I've worked with both same firms, both organizations.
Right. Rollup was preceded this firm at San Diego Unified, correct?
The firm was actually followed Sandy followed this firm prior to Fieldman was another firm. It was Gardner Underwood and Bacon. And then it was Fieldman, and then KNN. And all went through this process here of our fees.
Right. Do you think do you think it's a good idea to replace the bond, the financial advisor when we're under a Securities Exchange Commission inquiry? Do you know how that will impact our position and the historical knowledge that we may need?
There are responsibilities under the financial advisor that they're responsible to the SEC. So if the SEC has any inquiries on the particular bond transactions, they're responsible to that. So whether it's a new firm, they're going to be responsible for any transactions going forward. And then the prior firm still has a fiduciary obligation to provide any information on any prior transactions. on any prior transactions. I, I see that a, a different firm will also provide different perspective. Um, I think there's, we have a team. We have Oric as our counsel on this particular matter with the SEC. So it's not one particular person or, or firm representing and providing that information.
I, I just think it, I question whether or not that's our best choice. Also, the fact that this is a five-year contract, is it not?
And that is the ed code contract.
Well, is that?
Are, there are terms at any point in time, and George can, um, confirm that, and I think general counsel could as well. We do have terms at any point in time if there were any out clause, for help if needed.
You're saying ed code requires us to have a five-year contract with a financial advisor?
Ed ca, ed code allows up to five years.
Allows. Here's the key word. Allows. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Hall? Comments?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, if none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the RFP number 90-2741-GW and authorize staff to negotiate and enter into an agreement with KNN Finance for Municipal Financial Advisory Services. The proposer with the highest points total based, uh, on the evaluation criteria of the RFP and as determined by the evaluation committee.
President Tarantino? If I, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, what Ms. Hall brought up, I think would be a good question to ask our, our legal counsel, what, what she thinks of, uh, switching over at this time, if it would, if it, if it looks better or not doesn't, or, just a legal opinion.
Okay.
So, so generally, I, I, so generally, I didn't give you a legal opinion in open session. Um, uh, but I, I think that, you know, Dr. Salkeld just shared that she feels that this is, um, something that provides different perspective. I think what is important to know is that any consultant that we have has a fiduciary duty, um, even past the term of their contract. Um, and so I think that there isn't a way that a professional wouldn't, um, have to still support information requested. So I, I think, um, beyond that, I, I'm going to defer to Dr. Salkeld on that.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So with that, I'll, I'll move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second. Uh, moved by Solis, seconded by Tarantino. Madam Clerk, will you call for the vote?
Hall?
No.
Solis?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Segura? You muted yourself, Mr. Segura.
Yeah. No.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes three yes, two no.
Okay. That brings us to, uh, the end of, um, the, um, items that were pulled. And so with that, I wish everyone a good evening and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.